Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Kalin.
Here.
Mr. Pepe.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Charter. Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Okay, you're still here. Mayor Baruch.
I'm here.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. All right, if I can get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda, please.
I move we adopt the meeting agenda.
If I can get a second?
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? The ayes have it, the meeting agenda is adopted. We have several proclamations this evening. I've asked council members to each take a turn in reading these. The first one that we have is for the Honorable Karen Henenberg, who is going to be retiring, and Vice Mayor Snyder asked for this to come forward, so I'm going to ask that he read it.
Thank you very much. Dave Charter and I had the opportunity to attend the celebration for Judge Henenberg several weeks ago at the Arlington County Courthouse, and we thought at the time that it's overdue that the city recognized Judge Henenberg's considerable contribution not only to the city and all of our citizens, but to the region. So this proclamation is just a small token of our appreciation for the years of dedicated public service. Whereas longtime resident, the Honorable Karen Henenberg, Arlington County and Falls Church District Courts Judge, is retiring from the bench after a distinguished legal and judicial career. And whereas Judge Henenberg has served the City of Falls Church on the bench since her appointment in 1995. And whereas Judge Henenberg also served as a substitute judge for the General District and Juvenile Domestic Relations District Courts in Northern Virginia from 1991 to 1995. And whereas Judge Henenberg's career spanned services as assistant Commonwealth attorney, to private practice, to the bench, to teaching at George Mason University School of Law and at Marymount University. And whereas Judge Henenberg's career also includes many speaking engagements and active involvement in the National Association of Women Judges, Virginia Association of Women Judges, Virginia Bar Association, and Virginia Women Attorneys Association. And whereas, in addition to her legal work, Judge Henenberg has served the community through work with Sued and For Change, the Offender Aid and Restoration Project, Christmas Angel, and as a riding instructor and volunteer with the Loudon Therapeutic Riding Foundation. And whereas, the Falls Church City Council wishes to recognize one of its long-term citizens, Judge Karen A. Henenberg, for her long and distinguished career and her service to the community in which she lives.
Now therefore, I, Mayor Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, hereby do proclaim May 13, 2013, as Karen A. Henenberg Day, and the City of Falls Church, in recognition of Judge Henenberg's service to the Falls Church community, example of leadership that our children can aspire to, and as an attending citizen, in witness thereof, I unto set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 13th day of May 2013.
Judge, could you come up with your family to receive the proclamation?
Congratulations.
Nice to meet you.
Jason, how you doing? Who's this guy?
The next proclamation that we have is declaring Police Week. And I've asked Councilmember Pepe to read that proclamation.
We'll lean over this way. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Falls Church City Police Department. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officials are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, 320 names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 119 officers killed in 2012 and 201 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 25th annual candlelight vigil on the evening of May 13, 2013. And whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 12 through 18. And whereas, May 15 is dedicated as Peace Officer Memorial Day, in honor of the fallen officers and their families, and the U.S. flag should be flown at half-staff.
Now therefore, I, Mayor Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12 through the 18, 2013, as Police Week in the City of Falls Church, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. In witness thereof, I unto set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 13th day of May 2013. Ms. Shields? Oh, please. Let me have one of our officers who's going to be commenting on this. Officer, I don't know if you had any comments that you wanted to make?
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, just to let you know and the public know, in addition to the deaths that we had in 2012, we currently have 41 deaths year-to-date for 2013.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service and your fellow officers throughout the country. The next proclamation that we have is regarding School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, and I've asked Councilmember Charter to read that proclamation.
Good evening. Whereas May is Law Enforcement Officer Appreciation Month, and whereas Falls Church City Public Schools have only one school resource officer, Steve Rao. Whereas the SRO provides a safe and secure environment for both students and school staff through education, deterrence, and enforcement. And whereas, the SRO thoroughly investigates or coordinates the investigation of offenses that occur on school property. Whereas, the SRO attends community, government, and business meetings to lecture and answer questions about juvenile crime. And whereas, the SRO assists the driver's education teacher with instruction on traffic law and related statutes. And whereas, SRO Steve Rao is the face of friendly, helpful, and concerned law enforcement, performing his duties in an exemplary manner and keeping our students and schools safe.
Now therefore, I, Mayor Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, hereby proclaim May 13, 2013, as School Resource Officer Appreciation Day in the City of Falls Church, and encourage all citizens to join the city council in thanking Officer Ru for his service and dedication to school safety. In witness thereof, I unto set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 13th day of May 2013. Officer Ru, if you would please come forward. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Before Officer Rao leaves, I just want to point out an incredible service that he performs and how much the students really look up to him. He gave the commencement speech, if I recall, for my daughter's graduation from high school, and it was one of the best commencement speeches I've ever heard. So, thank you very, very much for all that you do.
Thank you. And the last proclamation that we have this evening is regarding Watershed and Flood Awareness Month. Ms. Berry?
Whereas the streams and tributaries that flow both above and below the ground through the City of Falls Church are part of an interconnected watershed system that carries water from our rooftops, yards, streets, and parking lots into the Potomac River and the Chesapeake Bay. And whereas, the City of Falls Church is committed to improving and protecting these precious waters as habitat for plant and animal life, as a recreational resource, and as drinking water for our citizens both now and in the future. And whereas, there are currently 213 commercial and residential properties in the City of Falls Church -- oh, sorry, in the Falls Church City portion of the trips-run and four-mile-run floodplains. And whereas, the city is participating in the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System, which recognizes and encourages community floodplain management, and through which flood insurance rates may be reduced to reflect the reduced flood risk resulting from community activities that meet targeted goals. And whereas, the city provides opportunities to residents, businesses, schools, churches, and organizations to participate in watershed and floodplain education efforts. And whereas, many citizens in our community have responded by participating in programs that serve to raise awareness about what individuals can do on their properties, in their homes, and through their transportation choices, to improve water quality and minimize their impact on the floodplain. And whereas, the city has undertaken a citywide comprehensive effort to examine our watershed and to develop a plan for improving the watershed over the next 10 years. And whereas, the City of Falls Church recognizes the importance of increasing public awareness of watershed and floodplain protection.
Now therefore, I, Mayor Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 2013 as Watershed and Flood Plain Awareness Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of this observance and to participate in watershed and flood protection activities in our community. In witness thereof, I unto set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 13th day, May 2013. Ms. Shields? Oh, Jason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch. I appreciate the opportunity to briefly take a moment and speak to our ongoing efforts to manage stormwater and to protect the environment. Dedicating May as Watershed and Flood Plain Awareness Month underscores the importance city council has placed on stormwater. The recent approval of a Stormwater Enterprise Fund further demonstrates a commitment to improving and protecting floodplains, streams, watersheds, and the community from both water quality and quantity concerns. As you know, the Department of Public Works leads the city's stormwater efforts by managing programs like the Watershed Management Plan, the MS-4 Permit, and the oncoming Chesapeake Bay TMDL, our Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance, the National Flood Insurance Program, and Community Rating System, of which we are now seven, which provides 15 percent reduction in premiums for our residents, our ongoing erosion and sediment control program, and our stormwater capital improvements. And commonly, the community sees these activities through our storm sewer cleaning, our street sweeping. We do community outreach via the mail, radio, newspaper, and the web. We do water quality and quantity BMP inspections annually. We have household hazardous waste events and recycling extravaganzas, habitat restoration events, and rain barrel events. And again, thank you for the opportunity and for recognizing the importance of this.
Jason, thank you and to all of our staff for bringing this forward and working on the stormwater and flood management issues. So, thank you. If you'd please join in the council for a photo. And I would just remind staff, I know that some of these end up going to other applications, that my name or this proclamation with my name not go to the federal government or any entity. And that's given my job. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Great. The next item on the agenda is swearing-in of any new board and commission members. Are there any members of the public who are here to be sworn in? Shaw, are you aware of anybody to be sworn in? They're not here? Okay. Great. We are on to receipt of public comments. I've got a couple items that are not on the agenda, so I'm going to take those first and then open it up for other members of the public who wish to address items that may be on the agenda this evening. The first speaker slip that I have is from Ms. Ruth Rogers, Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'm the City Council. I'll be very brief, because I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight. You have in your packet a memo from the Planning Commission, and I'd like to convey our unanimous agreement that we want to recommend that we make a zoning code change. As you know, the Planning Commission and the City Council has been hearing from a lot of our citizens about substandard lots. And after many, many years of listening to this, not only at our hearings, but at your hearings, and also having public comment sessions, we would like to unanimously recommend that you make a change to the zoning code. And that is that contiguous substandard lots shall be considered combined for the purposes of administering all zoning regulations as of the date of final enactment of this amendment, or July 1, 2013, if one home straddled a contiguous lot as of that date and the home used both substandard lots for setback purposes. This is our considered recommendation after many hearings, and we hope that you will find it in your heart to move forward on this. We really think the time has come to make this change in our zoning code, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Chair Rogers. And I believe that's coming up on a work session, Mr. Shields? Great. Thank you.
Yes. As you know, we've had a lot of work sessions, and so we're hoping that something can move forward.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker slip that I have is from Reverend Kathy Tibbetts.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, honorable members of the City Council, I'm here tonight with Sue Thackeray to extend invitations to two important events. Our own dear Jessie Thackeray will be turning 100 years old this Flag Day, June 14. And in honor of her century of life amongst us, we will be celebrating, and we'd like to invite everyone in the City Council, and indeed, everyone in the community, to consider coming and gathering at the Falls Church on Sunday, June 16, for a public celebration of her life. We'll have a service of worship at 10:00 a.m., and then following that, there will be an old-style potluck dinner with hymn singing, and an opportunity for all of Jessie's friends and neighbors to have an opportunity to address her and to acknowledge her many contributions to the community. In 1948, Jessie and her late husband Franklin were among those who actively campaigned for Falls Church to become an independent city, making her one of our city's few surviving founders. Franklin Thackeray, as you may recall, was chairman of the city's Historic Charter Committee, and in the 1960s, Jessie was a very strong advocate and civic leader of the City of Falls Church public school system. So, we hope you all consider coming and joining us on June 16 to celebrate her life amongst us.
Thank you very much. Absolutely. And councilmembers, what just got passed out is the invitation for Jessie Thackeray's birthday, so all of the council members should have that at this point.
Okay, okay. That was what I wanted to address, too, the one on the 23rd. So, if you can't make it to one, I hope that you all can come to the other one.
Thank you very much. All right. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mary E. O. O'Donnell.
Good evening, Falls Church City Council members. I'm Mary O'Donnell, and I'm the proprietor of Maud Cuisine. I seek to obtain a business license to operate my mobile food cart in the City of Falls Church. To that end, since there are no prohibitions against mobile food operations in the city, I request an ordinance change allowing mobile food operations in the city. Alternatively, I'm requesting the council grant me a 60-day waiver to obtain a license while an ordinance change is under consideration. I am a pull-herself-up-by-the-bootstraps food entrepreneur and a single mom struggling to provide for my family while residing in the city. In order to launch my taco cart, I have rented space with the Martin Leppard Sipes VFW Organization. It is a mutually beneficial arrangement, as my renting their commercial kitchen space provides a stream of income to the vets and meets the Fairfax County Health Department requirements for operating a food-based business out of a certified and inspected commercial kitchen. In addition to introducing a new stream of income to the vets, my taco cart will also give birth to a new business and source of tax revenue into the city. I will not park in front of existing food service establishments, nor will I compete with said food establishments directly, as I am serving a market segment that includes the workers who haven't time during their lunch shift to go to a sit-down restaurant, yet seek an alternative to fast food establishments. As is my intent to primarily serve workers at the numerous car dealerships, repair shops, and those workers in buildings which house city and county workers, it will not increase the traffic and parking congestion into the city. In fact, quite the opposite. I have obtained my food license from the Health Board, incorporated my business through the Secretary of the Commonwealth, obtained liability and cart insurance, safe food handlers licenses, inspection of the cart by the Fairfax County Health Department, as well as inspection by the Falls Church City Fire Marshal, and have chartered the cart food service destinations to the businesses' work locations mentioned above. Still, I face a hurdle obtaining my license from the city to legally operate my new business. I implore you to please take the appropriate steps to grant me this license, so that I may start serving authentic Mexican tacos, to include fiery shrimp tacos, grilled steak carne asada tacos, and the inimitable carnitas tacos, which is a low and slow roasted pork. Doesn't that sound good? I also have salsa. In so doing, the city would be demonstrating support of the small businessperson, as well as the large business people, support for the veterans, and finally, support for the families who are trying to make a living while residents of Falls Church City. If you are considering changing Falls Church's ordinance pertaining to mobile food operations, so that is in harmony with Fairfax County's allowance of mobile food operations, I have provided the Fairfax County Code below for the council member's convenience. Particularly relevant to my request is Section 43-1-2-4, base of operation. Mobile food units and limited-service mobile food units shall operate from a base of operations that possesses a food establishment permit issued in accordance with this chapter. However, the director may waive this requirement if the mobile food unit or limited-service mobile food unit meets all construction standards applicable to the food items served by the unit. The director may allow a mobile food unit or limited-service mobile food unit to operate from a base of operations outside of Fairfax County, Virginia, if the base of operations meets basic sanitation requirements and is permitted by another jurisdiction, which is what the VFW does. So, thank you for your kind attention to this urgent matter. My business, my home, and my family's lives depend on a positive outcome of this request. Respectfully, Mary O'Donnell.
Thank you very much for bringing this forward. What I'm going to ask, unless council members have any thoughts in addition to this, that we refer this to the city manager and city attorney, and as needed, to the planning commission for them to report back exactly on what the council action would need to be here unless they're prepared to answer that this evening, as far as what action the council would need to take with any, or if this is an administrative issue that staff can deal with directly. Ms. Shields?
If we could get back to the city council, and we'll get in touch with Maud Cuisine as well to talk over the proposal. I am aware of the proposal and the issues that we have with the city code, but I'm not prepared to speak exactly what the fix would be tonight.
Great. So perhaps we can bring it back during work session comments at the tail end next week? Does that give you enough time, Ms. Shields? Ms. Foster, does that give you enough time to look at it as well? Thank you. Does that work with councilmembers? Yeah, I think, you know, this is something that's sort of new, and I know that carts are sort of a big hip thing, and certainly in DC, so we may get further requests. And there's a developer behind you who's looking at Portico Retail, and they're going to be talking about that, and there may be a good synergy down the line in a few years if the building does go forward and is approved this evening. So, you might want to have a little sidebar. All right. Well, thanks very much, and hopefully we'll have more for you next week. And thanks for bringing this to the council's attention.
Thank you.
All right. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Christopher Bergen from the Chamber of Commerce regarding development issues in the city.
Good evening. Mayor Baruch, Vice Mayor Snyder, and members of the city council. I am Christopher Bergen, president and publisher of Tax Analysts, right here in town, and chairman of the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce. As you know, the chamber fully endorses both the development projects before you this evening, and we urge you to approve, A, the comprehensive plan amendment and the special exception request made by Lincoln Properties in order to build the reserve at Tinner Hill, and B, the special exception request made by Rushmark Properties in order to build the project known as 301 West Broad Street. Both of these are exceptional projects and will generate significant income for the city. They will also attract people to live, work, shop, eat, and hire local businesses. The city has recently increased its property tax rate and approved a stormwater utility fee that will affect residents and businesses alike. Approval of these projects will generate income to the city between $2 and $3 million, while also providing residential units for clients and customers, and new retail and commercial space for Fresh Market, Harris Teeter, and other destination businesses. Further, these projects will generate direct school contributions of more than $3.5 million, funds for parkland, electric car charging stations, bike racks, undergrounding the utilities, stormwater management, and streetscape improvements, and they will be lead silver projects. The income these projects will generate, directly and indirectly, could easily offset future tax increases and therefore make it easier for current businesses and residents to remain in Falls Church. I would also like to say that as a representative of Tax Analysts, we built our property here based on the knowledge that we would be part of a larger city center project. We, as employees and business leaders on South Maple, are looking forward to having a better streetscape, along with dining and shopping options in the area. These are exciting projects for Falls Church, and they are both more than worthy of the special exceptions they have requested. On behalf of the chamber and the business community, I ask you to please approve these projects this evening, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much, Chris. The next speaker slips that I have are regarding items that are on the agenda, but as we've done in the past, I'm happy to take those comments now or hold them until we get to those items on the agenda. And each member of the public will have three minutes, and if you can also provide your name and your address for the record as well. So if there's any members that wish to address items that are on the agenda, I'm happy to take those now or when we get to them. Okay, so we will take them up when we get to those items. Ms. Shaw, if there's any comments unrelated, or actually, if you want to summarize any comments we've received in writing? or actually, if you want to summarize any comments we've received in writing?
You did receive the packet from Ruth Rogers regarding the zoning code change. With regard to Pearson Square, you have a letter from Bill Baskin, and he discusses the potential negative financial impact on Maple Avenue, one where Pearson Square is more appealing to renters versus owners. He said that could exceed $1 million. This would negate the long-term economic benefit to the reserve. He talks about the height of the building across from Pearson Square, and he has asked that the building be turned. You've received this in your mail previously. You have a letter from the ESC with regard to their comments on this particular complex. This may be part of your package already, but it came in kind of late, so I have it here also. They want it to be, with regard to Rushmark, the Harris Teeter project, they want it to be LEED-certified. They want to have adequate facilities for secure parking of bicycles. They want to have recharging for electric vehicles. They want the exterior lighting to be cast downward. And they want all measures that are feasible to be taken to reduce stormwater runoff. Excuse me. Mr. Ron Brusseau, he asked the council not to proceed with the special exception for the Rushmark development unless the developer agrees to provide at least 17 affordable housing units, and then he discusses the policy issues there. With regard to the issue of the drive aisle and requests to put off, make it a decision on the Rushmark project today, we received many, 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 many emails, which is why I have not had time to really summarize these adequately. But I'll read to you who, the people who have submitted comments. Ken Fears and Linda Pegg, Chris Calabrese, Dee Ellison, Stephanie Calabrese, Joseph Conaty, Kate Anderson, Isabel Babington, Diane Bartley, Lisa Bonaparte, Barbara Conaty, Ed Gray, Natalie Gray, Lena Marisak, and Karen Oliver representing the Winter Hill Community Association, Lori Tasharsky, and Denise Wells. And then finally, you received an email from Cecilia Vallejos, and she really is not happy with the project at all. She talks about the environmental impact, the amount of cars it's going to bring, the amount of traffic and buses, and air pollution, and density. And you have this also in your package. She's asked everyone to think of the health of individuals living and working in the city before, and during, and after this decision on this project. That's it, council.
Thank you very much. All right, we are on to items on the agenda. Or, I'm sorry, we have the report of the city manager for council, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, and members of council. Just one thing to report on, I'd like to provide the council and the community an update on our efforts for the transition plan with Fairfax Water as we work together on technical issues associated with the transition of the sale of the water system to Fairfax Water, assuming the voters approve it on November 5th this coming fall. But we're making great progress on our employee transition issues, on billing transition, data transfer, software transition, engineering and operational issues. This effort is on the city side, led by Brenda Creel, our Director of Utilities, our entire utility management team, the city attorney, and our employee task force. I also want to note that on May 1st, the Wholesale Customer Board at the Washington Aqueduct met together with the General Manager and leadership of Fairfax Water to begin the discussions of an amendment to the agreements that we operate under currently for the purchase of water from the Army Corps of Engineers. Arlington County and DC Water were at this meeting, and the meeting went very well, and we will begin to work through any issues that they may raise as we work through that transition at that level as well. I also just want to note that with the city attorney's good efforts, the Commission on Local Government has received the boundary adjustment agreement that was adopted by the city council at your meeting on April 22nd, as well as the Fairfax County has taken action on that agreement as well. They have received that agreement, and they plan to hold a hearing here in the city on Monday, July 8 at 7:00 PM. And we will coordinate with them about the details for that public hearing, but I wanted people to be aware that that is coming up as the Commission on Local Government considers the boundary adjustment. So this is just a status report on our efforts. Our goal has been to make sure that all of the major issues that we need to identify and work to resolve are on the table and have been identified by July 1st as we work forward towards a smooth transition for the benefit of our customers, employees, and the city. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shields. Any questions or comments by council members? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. Over the weekend, there was an article in The Post listing the average teacher salaries in the school districts around the metro area, and noted that Falls Church's numbers were near the top, not at the very top, but certainly in the upper rank, with a number of jurisdictions below us. I wonder if those numbers reflect, you know, every jurisdiction's just-passed budgets for the coming fiscal year. If you could consult with the schools and get us that information, I think it'd be helpful as we, you know, begin to think about where we're headed next year on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just wanted to call people's attention to this Saturday is the Civil War Day, and where we have reenactments and learn about what the city was like 150 years ago. And my understanding is that Congressman Moran will be here to help us dedicate the new Civil War Trail signs at 10:00 AM Saturday mornings. I wanted everyone to be aware of that event. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? I'm going to ask that we go back to public comments. I inadvertently misfiled one of them, so. Nikki Graves Henderson, she's going to be speaking about the Tenner Hill Blues Festival. I filed it under the Tenner Hill Project, so my apologies.
Yeah, this is really important stuff here. Good evening, I'm Nikki Graves Henderson. I live at 307 South Maple Avenue. And I'd like to ask everyone to get out their calendars and mark June 7, 8, and 9 for the 20th Annual Tenner Hill Blues Festival. We have grown from a small, community-embraced street festival to a citywide, three-day-long weekend event of blues music, barbecue, and brew. We start on Friday, where we've combined forces with First Friday, so you'll see blues music at businesses all over town. Stifel &amp; Kappa, Art &amp; Frame of Falls Church, Famous Dave's Barbecue, and then we go to the State Theater, where John Hammond, who is a national artist, will be here in Falls Church. One of the things that we're most proud of is while there are many festivals in the area, the Tenner Hill Blues Festival is the only one in Northern Virginia that is attracting not only regional performers, but national performers. On Saturday, we will have free events most of the morning and throughout the afternoon. At the community center, there will be film screenings. There'll be a panel discussion on the history and development of blues music. There will also be blues music at the Farmer's Market. And then at noon at Cherry Hill Park, we'll start our fabulous lineup with Big Bill Morganfield, who is the son of Muddy Waters, right here in Falls Church, Sister Monica from the West Coast, Roy Bookbinder, who is an icon and my idol because he's one of the people who's behind Merrill Fest, the festival in North Carolina that draws over 80,000 people per year and has an economic impact of over $18 million on a community college campus. So I think that it's something for us to aspire to. We also have Darryl Davis, the Acoustic Blues Women, Beverly Guitar Watkins, another national act. On Sunday, we will have a blues brunch in tribute by the Archie Edwards Heritage Ensemble at our own Mad Fox Brewing Company, which will again be producing a Tenner Hill Ale that you'll be able to purchase on Saturday afternoon. And we've got much, much more. I just want to whet your appetite and tell you all, please make sure you put those dates on your calendars, cancel all your other plans, and we will see you then. Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. And again, it's a great event, and thanks for bringing it to the city, and also for all the sponsors as well, so I know I'm looking forward to it. All right, I think those are all the public comments I have on items not related, on matters on the agenda, dare I say. Hopefully I haven't misfiled anything. All right, so we are on to business on the agenda, unless there's any other comments by council members? Okay. If we can have the reading of the next item, please.
First item is TR 1307, Resolution to amend the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to change the designation of approximately 2.2 acres of land located at 540 and 580 South Washington Street, and from business to mixed use in the city's future land use map. And also connected with that is TR 13-06, our resolution to grant a special exception for development and height bonus for mixed-use development on the approximately 2.2 acres of land located at 540 and 580 South Washington Street, known as Reserve at Tenner Hill by Lincoln Property Company.
Thank you very much. And council members, just so everybody's aware of what we're going to be taking up, there is a revised resolution that's dated May 13, 2012, or it should actually be 2013. And that has red lines in and out. And there's also a revised VC as well, which has some red lines in and out. I will note that there is a typo on voluntary concession number eight. This shows up on page five in the new edition. I believe that sentence should be "accept that after 12 years," from rather than from. So, little typo there, but I'm sure that everybody can agree to that, hopefully. So that's just for the benefit of the council members. So we may need to handle the SEs. I don't know if those have been signed, or I'm sorry, the voluntary concessions have been signed yet or not, but I'm sure that can hopefully be taken care of later. John, is that right? All right, so if we can have the staff report, and then we'll give an applicant an opportunity to talk about any of the changes. And again, if we can focus on the staff presentation and the presentation by the applicant of the major issues that have evolved and sort of hit the highlights.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, and members of council, members of the community. We will have Elizabeth Perry, who's been our staff lead on the reserve at Tenner Hill. She will provide the staff report for us tonight, and then she will be followed by a developer's presentation on the project. I would just note that we've been working on this project for many months, and through that discussion, the council's direction on this project is that for any SE project that we have in the city, where there is a request for a height bonus and for residential uses in our commercial districts, that as part of that redevelopment, that the city will be looking for very strong commercial uses, a strong commercial component as part of that project. In addition to that, as a primary concern for this project, the council has looked for very pedestrian-friendly design and a lot of activity on Maple Avenue. And the thinking with this direction is that this project should serve as a catalyst for our existing businesses that are adjacent to this site, and also in keeping with the South Washington Area Plan, which is under development, which envisions dynamic redevelopment in certain areas of this corridor. And so we've worked with the applicant, with Richard Rose and his team, to meet these objectives, and also to meet the primary and secondary criteria of our SE ordinance. And after these months of working with Mr. Rose and his team with Lincoln Properties, it is the staff recommendation that the council give this application to amend the comp plan and grant the SEs to give that favorable consideration. The staff recommendation is that it meets those criteria for approval. So with additional detail on the staff report and on the primary and secondary criteria, fiscal impact, and a brief summary of the voluntary concessions, Elizabeth Perry will provide that report.
Yes, thank you. As the city manager mentioned, the applications associated with this development are a comprehensive plan amendment and a special exception amendment. Staff is recommending that council approve these applications. I will provide the summary of the staff report, which outlines the criteria for special exception approvals, and also the comprehensive plan amendment. And following that summary, Rick Goff of the city's Economic Development Office will provide some more detailed information on the fiscal impact. So to put the subject development into a context, the subject properties are zoned B3, which is our general business district. It allows for a variety of commercial uses by right, but residential uses are not permitted unless a special exception is approved. A building height of 55 feet is permitted by right in the B3 district unless a special exception for additional height is approved, and you could have a height bonus of 30 feet to allow for a maximum of 85 feet. The subject properties are located at 540 and 580 South Washington Street. They are currently developed with approximately 5,600 commercial square feet of motor vehicle sales and repair uses. The proposed mixed-use development, known as the Reserve at Tenner Hill, proposes a building of 85 feet in height, a neighborhood grocery store of approximately 26,000 square feet, commercial square footage of approximately 18,000 square feet, 224 rental apartments, and a plaza of approximately 7,000 square feet. I'd like to talk about the comprehensive plan amendment first. And the actual resolution is to amend the future land use map. The existing and future land use map in the comprehensive plan both have the subject properties designated for business use. However, there are other parts of the comprehensive plan that suggest that the mixed-use designation would be supported and more appropriate. For one, the site is located in the South Washington corridor, where the comprehensive plan calls for the following: new, higher-density redevelopment, structured parking, redevelopment that eliminates standalone automobile storage facilities, improvements to facilitate pedestrian crossings along South Washington Street, a positive image of the city as part of a gateway, and the preservation of historic resources. And the subject application incorporates these elements. In addition, there are certain circumstances when a comprehensive plan amendment is warranted, and they are: significant change has occurred in the area of the subject site since the adoption of the comprehensive plan; specific provisions of the comprehensive plan unreasonably limit the ability of the city to achieve more holistic objectives of the comprehensive plan; and/or there are oversights or inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan regarding the subject site. Most notably, staff finds that significant change since the last adoption of the comprehensive plan warrants a mixed-use designation. And some of these reasons include the mix of residential and commercial uses at Pearson Square and the Tax Analyst Building, which are adjacent to the subject site. These properties are on South Maple Avenue. And a planned intermodal transit facility near the subject site, which creates an opportunity to co-locate density with new transit facilities. And this is supported as a planning practice and also by provisions of the comprehensive plan. Therefore, staff supports a mixed-use designation for the subject properties. Moving on to the special exception criteria, the special exception application is to allow residential development as part of a mixed-use project on property zone Business District, and a building height of 85 feet, where 55 feet is permitted by right in the B3 district. And as detailed in the staff report, the code outlines the criteria by which special exceptions are evaluated. And staff finds that the elements of the proposed development, along with the voluntary concessions, satisfies the special exception criteria. I'll walk through some of the key highlights of this project and how they conform with the criteria set forth in the code. the criteria set forth in the code. The first primary criteria is resulting development conforms to the city's adopted Comprehensive Plan and Design Guidelines. And as I described in the analysis for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, there are provisions of the Comprehensive Plan that are incorporated into this development. But with regard to the Design Guidelines, the subject property is located in what is called the Broad and Washington Street Corridor Subarea. And the features that are called for on development in this subarea and are incorporated into this project are the creation of plazas and open spaces to draw people to and from the busy streets, an urban street frontage with streetscape and walkable paths and pedestrian facilities, and a dramatic sense of entry and departure at the city's gateway. And the 7,000-square-foot public space that the developer is providing as part of the development, we think will create that dramatic entrance for the city. In addition, there are varied wall surfaces and articulation, variation in building materials and textures that break down the mass of the building, and these are important architectural elements to help break down the mass of the building associated with the proposed height density, height bonus, excuse me. The second secondary primary criteria is that the resulting development allows for a significant net new commercial square footage and allows for a mix of commercial and residential uses. As mentioned, the commercial uses on the site are approximately 5,600 square feet, whereas the subject application proposes approximately 40,000 square feet of commercial uses and residential use where none currently exist. The building is designed to accommodate no less than three types of commercial uses, one being the grocery store, which is a tenant that is committed to by the developer in the voluntary concessions, portico retail spaces along South Maple Avenue, and restaurant space, because through the voluntary concessions, the developer is providing vents that go to the roof, which would help accommodate exhaust from restaurant uses, and this is considered an attractive amenity to restaurant tenants. Through voluntary concessions, the applicant is also committing to allowing uses permitted in the B1 district, and this is notable because the B1 district is a more restricted district than the B3 uses, than the B3 district. One of the uses in the B1 district is office use. However, through voluntary concessions, the applicant is agreeing to allow office uses only up to the first 12 years of the development. So, there is also some additional restrictions on the types of uses that we might expect in the commercial space of this project. The next primary criterion is the resulting development produces substantial positive net new commercial and residential revenue to the city. And as I mentioned, Rick Goff will go into more specific detail on this element, but based on the staff analysis, the subject properties currently yield about $79,000 in gross annual tax revenue to the city. And the proposed development could generate annual net revenues to the city between $604,000 and $960,000. There are then 10 secondary criterion. We'll walk through quickly, just kind of identifying some of the key elements that staff finds exemplifies how the project conforms to these criteria. One is that the resulting development is not disproportionate to surrounding land uses and also the planned land uses in size, bulk, or scale. And factors that make this site reasonable for additional density are its location along South Washington Street, which is a primary transportation corridor for the city. There are no abutting residentially zoned properties. The height and density of nearby redevelopments at Pearson Square and Tax Analyst Building are fairly comparable. And also, the site's proximity to the city's planned intermodal facility. The proposed building is an E-shaped building with the greatest height of the building along South Maple Avenue and kind of the E-shaped facing South Washington Street. And staff supports this orientation of the building because there is lower-density development on the other side of South Washington Street, including a single-family residential neighborhood. And as we do have more dense development existing on South Maple Avenue, having that orientation helps provide that transition from the lower-density parts of the city to the higher-density parts of the city. The next criteria that we look at is the resulting development does not overburden existing community facilities, including schools, transportation, and water and sewer systems. And through voluntary concessions, the applicant is proposing a contribution to the city in the amount of $7,511 for each residential unit not part of the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program, and this is to offset school capital costs. With regard to tran- excuse me, with regard to transportation, you often hear about a traffic impact study, sometimes called a transportation impact analysis, which is a tool used to help staff and the developer assess what the potential transportation impacts could be of a project. And there are two signals associated with this project. One is through a voluntary concession from the developer, and that is a signal at the intersection of Tanner Street and South Maple Avenue. I'm sorry, and South Washington Street. The second light is proposed by the city. It's part of a longer-term public improvements plan for South Washington Street. That would be a signalized intersection at South Maple Avenue and South Washington Street. And the transportation impact study was done, looking at both of these signals and how it would impact the potential traffic impacts on the site. And with the installation of both of those signals, all turning movements meet or exceed the city's minimum level of service, which is what we use to evaluate transportation impacts. Additional features of the proposed development that indicate transportation impacts will be mitigated and that the proposed development will not overburden the city's facilities include providing all of the parking required by the code, a transportation demand management plan, the site's subject proximity to the planned intermodal facility, as well as a number of bicycle and pedestrian amenities. A review of the proposal by Public Utilities indicated that water and sewer facilities can be accommodated with this, by this development. Another criteria is that the resulting development provides community benefits such as affordable housing. And through the staff analysis, we're talking about a lot of the elements of the voluntary concessions that we capture as community benefits. But with regard to affordable housing, there are 14 affordable dwelling units, or ADUs, proposed, and at least one of the ADUs will be accessible as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act. The next criteria is that the resulting development contributes to a vibrant, pedestrian-oriented environment, both on-site and in relation to adjoining properties, with street-level activity throughout the day and the night. And the fact that this is a mixed-use project, we have residential population that will be there potentially during the day, but certainly on the nights and the weekends. We have wide sidewalks and streetscape designs. And through voluntary concessions, the applicant is proposing electrical outlets that could help facilitate the use of the street for outdoor events or activities. We also have portico retail spaces along South Maple Avenue, which will help activate the street and be a complement to other nearby commercial uses. Another criteria is that the resulting development offers creative use of landscaping, open space, and/or public parks and plazas. And as mentioned, one of the key features of this development is a public plaza of approximately 7,000 square feet, and this is among the largest open spaces proposed as part of a special exception application. And this is in addition to some of the streetscape features that I've already described. Another criteria is that the resulting development provides a variety of commercial services and products. We've talked about the mix of commercial uses that have the potential to be tenants in this space, including the voluntary concession committing to a grocery store. The resulting development is to encourage local and independent businesses. That's another criteria. And one of the features of this project that specifically seems to capture this criterion is the portico retail space. And this is a new type of commercial space in the city, and the applicant has described it as a space that will be available on short-term leases and at lease rates lower than typical rental rates, which could be features that would appeal to small startups and/or local independent businesses. Another criteria, the resulting development provides for reduction of single-use parking requirements. As I mentioned, the applicant is proposing to provide all of the parking spaces required by the code, in addition to offering through voluntary concessions to have a transportation demand management program. The next voluntary concession is, I'm sorry, the criteria for the special exception is that the resulting development encourages multimodal transportation. So, in addition to the pedestrian facilities that we've talked about, there's also a new voluntary concession that the developer would be willing to work with the city should it start a bike-share program. The applicant would be willing to look for spaces on its site that could help accommodate that type of a use. And also, one of the other improvements that's very notable is a signal and the intersection improvements at South Washington Street and Tanner Hill Street. Not only will that help mitigate the transportation impacts of this project, but it will create a critical pedestrian link across South Washington Street, which will enable people who want to be a pedestrian but don't feel that it's safe to do now without a signal to come by foot instead of having to drive. Through voluntary concessions, the applicant is also proposing bus stop improvements, which will provide another opportunity for people to not have to drive to get to the subject site. And the last criteria is that the resulting development utilizes leadership in energy and environmental design, or LEED criteria, as part of the project. And one of the voluntary concessions is that the applicant is committing to construct the building to be LEED certified, and it would be LEED Silver under LEED for Homes Multifamily Mid-Rise. So, that concludes the summary of how the application complies with the special exception criteria. And at this time, I'd like to invite Rick Goff to talk about the fiscal impacts. Thank you.
Again, Rick, if we can hit sort of the highlights, I think that we've talked about the economic impacts as well.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Attachment two of the staff report has two reports that look at ranges of potential fiscal impacts of the project. New since last Monday's work session is also a table that's meant to merge as best we can all of the fiscal impact data and add some additional data points that were requested last week. In the interest of time, I'll just focus on and highlight the table labeled Fiscal Impact Scenarios for the Reserve at Tanner Hill. The table shows six scenarios with worst-to-best cases presented from top to bottom. For reasons I'll explain, we think the most likely range will be between $691,000 and $962,000 per year in net revenue for the city. This likely range assumes half the commercial space in the building is a grocery store, 25% is retail, and 25% will be used by restaurants. Those are the assumed ground-level uses, with portico retail adding only a very modest revenue enhancement. In terms of expense assumptions, our most likely range of net fiscal impact starts with a minimum of 26 pupils and an upper projection of 45. These estimates are based on current ratios of school-aged pupils and mixed-use development projects in the city. The lower end of the range of pupils, which has higher net fiscal impact of $962,000 a year, reflect existing pupil ratios at all five occupied mixed-use buildings in the city. The high end of the range of pupils, which has a lower net fiscal impact of $691,000, reflects ratios strictly for the two mixed-use apartment buildings, Pearson Square and the Reed Building. Now, there are other assumptions, other scenarios present in the table. Our worst case is a new set of data points, which would be net tax revenue to the city ranging from $275,000 per year to $545,000 a year, but that assumes that all of the non-grocery store space in the commercial areas would remain vacant. If the scenario of a grocery store and office uses fill the commercial space in the building, a range of net tax revenue is estimated between $334,000 and $604,000 a year. There's a scenario involving a combination of grocery, retail, and office that ranges between $605,000 and $875,000 a year. The scenario that would produce the greatest net tax revenue to the city would be the grocery and, in all remaining, commercial space, restaurant uses. This would produce between $926,000 and $1.2 million per year. Again, we believe the most likely scenarios fall within the $691,000 and $962,000 range per year. In addition, Lincoln will pay one-time fees and charges to the city of about $552,000. And it's been previously noted that the SOB and Meinike sites currently generate about $79,000 per year in gross revenue. That completes my report.
Thanks, Rick. And I believe that completes the staff report. I want to give council members an opportunity to ask any questions they have for staff before we move on to the applicant. Council, any questions? I believe I, Rick, I did have, at the work session, did request a scenario, if you have these numbers, if there was no grocery store, no commercial, assuming that for a period of time, the entire first floor were vacant, what the revenue would be?
No, the assumption that we used was that the non-grocery space would be vacant. So, we have not run numbers on all of the commercial space being entirely vacant.
Do we know what the grocery store is anticipated to generate?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
Okay. Perhaps we, if the applicant knows that, or if staff can get back those details, that'd be great.
Okay.
Turn it over to the applicant. And again, if we can hit the highlights and any changes that were made since the last time we saw you all.
I'm Richard Rose with Lincoln Property Company, and we're going to do this on the fly since we had a full presentation, so now we're going to just try to hit the highlights. As we need slides or you have questions, then we're more than willing to pull those up and show them. As you know, we've been working on this property for about 18 months. We assembled a quality team of individuals from Venable and the land use side, KTGY Architects, Walter L. Phillips in civil design, land design and land planning, Wells and Associates in traffic, GeoConcepts in environmental and geotechnical, Wetland Solutions to help deal with the floodplain issues that we were dealing with, and Walker Consulting, which is a parking consultant. The things that I think that I wanted to talk about tonight are the issues and how we addressed them. As you know, we went through all the boards and commissions, we met with neighbors, and we've tried to deal with each issue as it comes up. The first issue that we had when our first plan came out was retail along Maple Avenue, and we devised a new system to be able to activate Maple Avenue with the portico retail. And we think that is a very good active use for that particular area. The, we've had some concern about professional office being on the ground floor of the property and not enhancing the pedestrian experience. And to that effect, we want to make sure that the property is economically viable, and we've adjusted our voluntary concessions to say that we would not allow professional office in the building after 12 years, which basically means after the first two years, you probably would not be able to lease any more professional office space because of the term of the lease and the fit-out that would occur there. We, in order to deal with Pearson Square and some of the issues that they have had are, was that we did shadow studies to show that there's no shadow cast on Pearson Square except for maybe one time in December in the year. Of course, as we all know, shadows don't mean darkness, they just mean a different shade of light. We took four units off the top of the building and adjusted the building height. We also lowered the tallest architectural facade piece to try to help them out as well. In order to help with their retail, with our grocery store, we put in an entrance to the grocery store from their side of the street, and we've also provided a mid-block crossing for them. We also, I guess, identified environmental cleanup that we plan to do throughout the Meinike site. We're looking at our stormwater management, where we are not only helping clean that up, but we're also adding to quality and quantity that we put there as well. We've talked with, we've had some conversations with Victory Comics with regard to their entrance and agreed with them that we will make sure that they provide, that we provide or continue to provide full access on both Washington and Maple, and that the parking that they have today will remain, and we'll work out the details of that during our site plan approval, which I think is appropriate at that point. We've activated, again, all sides of the street. We've, I think, enhanced the pedestrian experience. We've been asked to match the Pearson Square side of the streetscape, and I think we've done that. We've looked at wider sidewalks and to be able to acti- We've looked at wider sidewalks and to be able to activate that pedestrian experience. And with that, I think that has hit most of the items that we have come up that, and if there are others that, that I haven't addressed or that I didn't remember on the fly, let me know, and I'll be happy to, to address those as well.
Council members, any questions for the applicant? What I propose that we do is open this up for public comment before we take a motion. That way, if we need to make any adjustments, we can do that based on, based on the comments we hear. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Mr. Foster, I take it the course of action I've laid out is, is fine from your standpoint, with taking public comments now before a motion? All right, the first speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Jeff Weaver, followed by Bill Baskin.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate you hearing me tonight. My name is Jeff Weaver. I live at 425 Lincoln Avenue, and I'm the owner of Victory Comics, which is located adjacent to the proposed Tanner Hill Reserve project. We are a three-year-old entertainment and retail destination. We were named by the Washington Post as one of the top 10 destinations in the city of Falls Church. The, I just want to take all things for, just for the record, and then I'll get on to my other remarks, but, so I apologize, this is just for the record. So Victory Comics butts a proposed Tanner Hill Reserve development in the west end of the city, an area with a great parking deficit. Today, Victory Comics benefits from a right-of-way in a shared drive that straddles the property line between the two properties. As articulated by the Virginia Supreme Court, Victory Comics can demonstrate all the elements to show that this right-of-way has been secured by prescription. In the interest of resolving this matter with the least amount of conflict and cost, I have been in contact with members of the council and with Mr. Shields and with representatives of the developer. Mr. Rose with Lincoln Properties has visited my site twice, and we've had meetings, and I appreciate his willingness to come down and talk about this issue. To this point, we have not come to a final resolution. The most recent proposal by Lincoln was, in Victory Comics' view, unacceptable because it would result in the loss of parking and the loss of two-way traffic in the parking lot or both. I sent a map around earlier today to members of the council that details these particular issues. Earlier today, Mr. Rose returned a call. I had placed a plea to him and proposed that he and I negotiate this matter during the site plan process, which we are happy to do. He assured me that the final resolution would ensure that Victory Comics not lose any parking and that two-way access through its lot, travel through its lot, would be maintained. I asked at that time if we could agree that the proposal he had sent me previously did not meet those criteria, and he said, well, he could not agree to that, he could agree that I didn't agree to it, and that therefore the proposal had to be amended. So I told him I'd take him at his word, and I'm a person of my word as well, and I've assured many of you that I have talked with, that I would try to resolve this in good faith without sort of pushing the sort of litigation trigger, and so we're going to try to work that out. And so I just want to give you that status report about where things are. I just do want to raise one sort of larger policy issue that I think the council should be aware of, that's more generally about redevelopment. In three of the last proposed developments in the city, there has been an impact on an existing local business. Victory Comics in this case, we all know about Anthony's, and there was an issue with Mr. Young's proposed project that involved the meat-in-the-box people. He, to his credit, resolved that with them, and they're very happy with the resolution, and so I think he should be commended for, for doing that. But this raises the issue of what the city's stance is in terms of redevelopment and the impact on small existing businesses. Many of us who have small businesses are located in the sort of older, lower part of the city, because that's where rents are more affordable. Going forward, it's my recommendation that the city review whether there should be some kind of formalized institutional part of the process that requires looking at whether projects have impacts on small local businesses and how those impacts can be mitigated. I know there was some effort on the part of the city to help out with Anthony's, I'm sure there's some disagreement about whether that was enough for too little or what have you, or whether they should have done it at all. But I, I do think, assuming that we can come up with future projects that don't rely on first-floor grocery stores, that there's going to be a lot more redevelopment in the city. And so I would urge the council to do whatever is possible to address this particular issue. Even though we're digging up the ground, we shouldn't be tearing at the fabric of our community. We are the little city, and I think I and you and other people here take that very seriously. It's not just a slogan. We're a small town, and even though we disagree on things, we still have to see each other in the grocery store or on the Little League ballpark or wherever. So I encourage you to, to address this particular issue. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I want to thank Mr. Weaver for bringing his issues to our attention and to working with the developer, and I do take the developer at his word that they'll continue to work through this and come up with a win-win situation result. So thank you for both, and we'll be watching that process. Thanks.
Just one comment that, you know, we can, we can perhaps table this, but this is a notion that I believe that the EDA has come up before, which Mr. Weaver touched upon, and that's the concept of affordable retail, and as we start seeing infill in our commercial corridors, that's going to be more and more challenging. Lincoln has sort of taken a step in that direction, dealing with Portico Retail. Those are going to tend to be cheaper, from what I understand, just because of the square footage and they're not on the prime real estate, but I believe that the chair of the EDA had actually sort of wanted the council to take a look at this issue. So I, I would just ask staff and council support that, that we start thinking through those issues and working with developers as part of their performance of how, how they can build in some affordability into the projects that we're getting, because that is going to become a, a challenge, and we've already seen that, so I think that's a point well taken. So if I can just ask council members if this is something that we should put into how we're looking at these projects moving forward? All right, the next speaker slip that I have is Mr. Bill Baskin, followed by Ed Novak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Bill Baskin, 301 Park Avenue, Falls Church. I'm here as counsel for the owners of Pearson Square. And first of all, I note that I gave to the city clerk earlier tonight a petition signed by, I believe, about 150 residents at Pearson Square, addressing the issue of the orientation of the building and the courtyards. And let me say again, I'd said this at, at the first reading of this, that we welcome the redevelopment of this site and believe that Lincoln's proposal is a fine one and will bring many benefits to the, to the city as well as to the community. We think in, in one respect, however, that it, that it could be still better, and, and that would be to have more of the focus on, on Maple Avenue and making Maple Avenue more of a pedestrian-friendly destination than it currently gets with the existing or proposed orientation of this building. And I'm speaking in particular of the courtyards. The, if these courtyards were to face Maple Avenue, it would have not only a softer impact of the mass of that building on the existing residents at Pearson Square, but it would allow more light onto the street, it would make the street more pedestrian-friendly. By contrast, having those courtyards face Washington Street, I, I believe yield a questionable benefit. They, certainly the traffic on Washington Street will receive no particular benefit from those courtyards, nor will the businesses that are across Washington Street. So we still think that the project is an excellent one, but believe that it could be even stronger and better and yield more benefits to the city as what, and in particular to the, to the neighbors on, on Maple Avenue. We have no objection to the uses or the mix of uses that Lincoln proposes. We have no, frankly, no objection to their height, we just believe the orientation of the building should be, should be changed. And, you know, we would ask that, that that be given further consideration prior to approving the project. And thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Ed Novak, followed by Mr. Edwin Henderson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Ed Novak. I am president of Nova Habitat, we're a development company based in Chevy Chase. I'm also a investor and serve on the board of directors of Mat Fox Brewing Company. But I'm really coming here tonight as a friend of the city. I have no financial interest or vested interest in the reserve at Tanner Hill, but I do think it is a very high-quality project that will serve the city well. Three points I'd like to make. One is that I believe in general, high-quality multifamily redevelopment like the reserve at Tanner Hill is good for the city. The residents are the retail and restaurant customers that the city wants to attract. The residents are the pedestrians in a pedestrian-friendly urban environment. The quality of architecture, I think, is superb, and a mixed-use project like this will really bring an attractive redevelopment to an area of the city that I think, you know, needs an attractive redevelopment. The net tax benefits and the one-time payments are quite compelling. Second point I'd like to make is that I do not believe that this is an either-or choice. I've heard the city council be concerned about giving up commercial land for residential uses. Frankly, I think this project should be embraced. The, it doesn't really compete with 100% residential, it exceeds 100% residential. The example I would give, just as one example, George Mason Square, Kaiser Permanente, and the Broad Falls Shopping Center collectively comprise 8.5 acres of land in the city. They have a cumulative tax assessment of 42.5 million. The reserve at Tanner Hill will be assessed at in excess of $70 million on 2.2 acres. That's seven times the per-acre assessment of those 100% commercial uses. Furthermore, there are at least 20 sites, at last count, along the Silver Line Metro that have been approved for future development of several million square feet of office space. Frankly, looking at this site and comparing it to that is not realistic. This site, most likely, if it were to be 100% commercial, would house a Walgreens and McDonald's. So I think putting it in that perspective is, is important. The last point I'd like to make is that, and again, as a friend of the city, a project that is approved but never built is not a success for anyone, not the city and not the developer. We have examples of those in the city now. I believe the Ackridge Corporation, in the last 12 years I've been active in the city, has had three Class A office buildings approved and has yet to put a shovel in the ground. So I have been somewhat concerned that numerous conditions placed on other developments could and do and have collectively undermined their financial feasibility. So at this point, I'd, I'd really like to respectfully request, as a friend of the city, that the city council balance their prudent and, and I think, good judgment on what they feel are reasonable terms and conditions of approval of a special exception with the financial and market realities that the developer faces. In that case, we can all have a win-win project. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Ed Henderson, followed by Marty Mizur.
Good evening, council. I'm Edwin Henderson. I have the enviable honor of being the only single-family home on South Maple Avenue. South Maple Avenue used to be the Fairfax Courthouse Road. In other words, there was no Lee Highway, there was no South Washington, that's how you got to Fairfax. I just want to say that this project, the Lincoln Property Project, is coming to you from a first-tier developer that has listened, adjusted, done everything that you want. I hope that, and I feel strongly that you will do the right thing, and that is to approve this project. I believe that the benefits far outweigh any liabilities that this redevelopment will bring. And I would be lying if I said I did not, was not proud of the fact that it's called the Reserve at Tanner Hill, being the founder and president of the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation myself. The one thing that I would like to bring to the city's attention, though, is that while we have, we're going to get a lot of money to do this, this and that, somehow we cannot afford to pave our streets. And the street that I live on, South Maple Avenue, is in crumbles. Now, are we going to wait until after this road is developed, or are we going to do something right now? In the past year and a half, right in front of my house, you patched the road four times. But we don't have money to develop, to pave our roads, and that's a shame when we have first-class schools and other first-class things in this city. So I think we need to quit being cheap. Let's do a little thing, a few things with the roads here in that area of town, which is becoming the cosmopolitan area of our city. We are no longer a little village, we say that we're a little city, and we have to use a balanced approach in making sure that we have not only first-class schools, but first-class infrastructure as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Henderson. The next speaker slip that I have is from Marty Mizur.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Marty Mizur. I live at 708 Berry Street, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Creative Cauldron, a tenant in Pearson Square. We're at the end of a long process, but I hope that, as with other projects that have weathered reviews and revisions, everyone feels that the proposal before you tonight is better for all concerned than the original submission. Thanks go to Richard Rose and his Lincoln Properties team for their responsiveness and willingness to meet with interested parties to understand their concerns. The reserve at Tanner Hill is an important project, both for the city and for the tenants and residents of Pearson Square. First, let me mention what we don't like. We don't like the fact that the city, the city didn't follow through with its promise to line Maple Avenue on both sides with shops and restaurants and thus create a lively center of activity away from the traffic of Washington Street. However, we do appreciate the work done by Mr. Rose and his team to bring some life back to Maple by adding the Portico Retail spaces that will hopefully attract small-scale entrepreneurs. Now let me tell you what we do like. We like the plaza and the grocery store. We like the idea of a festival street and hope that the city takes advantage of this amenity. We like the plan for high-revenue producing restaurants and shops. We like the assurances by Lincoln Properties that the move in and out activities will be handled in a way so as to not disrupt afternoon performances at Creative Cauldron. We like the idea that the reserve's residential lobby and reception area may be made available to Falls Church Arts for exhibits and activities. Together with the Tanner Hill Foundation, Falls Church Arts and Creative Cauldron have been the local pioneers that have created the heart of the art and cultural district in the city. We are all looking forward to working with our new neighbors to make Maple Avenue the place to be. With the addition of some fine restaurants and shops and the new transit hub, the South Washington Street area is poised to become the southern edge of the city center. We encourage council to give final approval to the reserve at Tanner Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Those are all the speaker slips that I have. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and close this item for public comment. Council, any questions before we take a motion? Oh, thank you, Gavin.
Lynn Voss had to leave, but she submitted comments. She does, oh, this is on the other project, excuse me, I'll pass on that one. You do have a letter from, a very brief letter from Gordon Thies at 802 Ridge Place, and he supports the mixed-use project at 540 and 580 South Washington Street. The other two are for the next project, sorry about that.
Let me go ahead and close the public comment now.
Thank you.
Any council comments before we take a motion? Vice Mayor.
I have a quick question, Mr. Mayor, for the developer. You heard Mr. Baskin this evening make some comments about the design. Do you have any comments in response?
Well, I, I'll have to say that the design did not come without being well thought out, and I guess the way that we look at it is that those courtyards are open to the south, which is, gives us that sun for our residents and for that area, and if it were flip-flopped around, they would probably not have it. They would reset, they would be recessed back, still you would not have any shadow on Pearson Square, so I don't think that's a real issue. And also, the courtyards are not at, at street level, they're up a level 22 feet in the air, so it's not like that you're going to be walking by a courtyard regardless of which side it is. side it is. And I think from best management planning practices, I think that city staff, our planners, and everyone else have come to the same conclusion that we have, that the orientation to the building is the correct one.
Thank you.
Other council member comment?
Just one question, if I could. Rick Goff, did I hear you right when you said that the $552,000 is the number for one-time fees that are thrown off by the construction of this project?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's things having to do with business and professional licenses, construction permits, that sort of thing, is that?
Yes, utility connections and so forth.
Okay, utility connections, okay. So half a million dollars plus related to the construction. And the school cap costs were listed at 7511 per unit, and so it's 210 market rate units, so that's 1.58 or so million dollars in school cap costs that are contributed. Is that, is that about right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're talking something north of 2.3, sorry, 2.2 million dollars that come to us simply because we are, you know, hopefully going to approve this project. Is that about right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other council members' questions? I just want to get back to the question, and I don't know if council member, or I'm sorry, staff has had a chance to do a back-of-the-embolof calculation, if there is no grocery store, no commercial on the first floor?
I did. If we eliminated all sales and business taxes, that would be an additional $136,000 lost in net revenue.
So that would bring it to roughly $100,000 net revenue?
The worst, worst, worst-case scenario, right.
What can I say, I'm a lawyer during my day job, but we got, we got to have the worst, worst. All right, anything else by councilmen? All right, if I can get a motion and then...
Mr. Mayor, before you take a motion, staff did want to bring to the council's attention there is a need to change a date. This is in the revised resolution dated May 13th at line 72. The date of the voluntary concessions should be changed to May 13th, not May 8th.
Sorry, what should the date be again?
May 13th today.
Thank you. Are there any other corrections that we need? And I think I pointed out the other one that's in the voluntary concessions. The type of...if I can get a motion, please.
I appreciate the opportunity to make this motion. As the Chair of the EDC, I've been involved in reviewing this with other council members for an extended period of time, feel like it's part of my DNA at this point. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this SE and comp plan amendment, but before I do, I would like to note why I strongly support this project. First, I'd like to thank the applicant, the city staff, and the city boards and commissions, and my fellow council members for all their hard work on this project. The Reserve at Tanner Hill project is the next step in the continued revitalization of the Maple and South Washington Street areas of the city, and this point is very difficult to emphasize enough. This is an extremely important component. There are another other points I had, but they've been covered in great detail by other speakers, so I won't repeat what has already been said a number of times. But I would like to add one point in particular. The grocery store is a key component of this project and is a key reason that I'm moving that the City Council approve this project. The grocery store provides crucial synergy for the residential units above and the other commercial units in the building. If the developer had not committed to a grocery store with this project, I would not support this project, we would not be moving it forward for its approval. So we appreciate the efforts that have been made. On that note, I would like to read the actual motion. Move approval of TR 13-07, resolution to amend the comprehensive plan of the city of False Church, Virginia, to change designation of approximately 2.2 acres of land located at 540 and 580 South Washington Street, real property code number 52308004, 52308008, from business to mixed use on the city's future land use map. Secondly, move to approve approval of TR 13-06, resolution to grant special exception for residential development and height bonus for mixed-use development on the approximately 2.2 acres of land located at 540 and 580 South Washington Street, real property code number 52308004, and 52308008, known as Reserve at Tanner Hill by Lincoln Property Company. Thank you.
Mr. Kalen, I take it on TR 13-06, it would be as amended as provided by Mr. Foster, is that right?
As amended by...
Or as suggested.
... suggested by Mr. Walker.
Yep, which was changing the May date.
Right.
Second.
Vice Mayor Snyder on the second. Want to go ahead and open this up for council member comments or any questions that you have before the vote? Ms. Barry?
Yeah, I just, I have a comment I certainly will support moving this forward, but I was especially appreciative of Mr. Henderson's interventions. I thought they were very powerful. And I think his remarks can be woven into earlier remarks regarding the importance of retaining small local businesses. I think these are part of the fabric of the, of the city and reflect the diversity and character that the city strives to maintain. I'm also pleased to hear such support from other organizations, such as Creative Cauldron, and note that in our council package, we received support and very thoughtful commentary from all relevant boards and commissions in support of this endeavor. So I think it has been well-vetted, I think it has been embraced by the, by the community. I think it reflects that which we are striving to do, and so I am, I'm very happy to support it.
Other council members? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, thanks to Mr. Baskin for coming and speaking of Pearson Square's interests. It's very important, of course, that this building work well with all of its neighbors, and, you know, I think it will. Tanner Hill spoke well of it, Mr. Vargan Tax Analyst is in the neighborhood, Mr. Weaver, Victory Comics, we hope those negotiations will conclude happily and with Pearson Square, of course. We hope the same will be the case, understanding that the building is probably going to end up in a direction that they might not have preferred. But, I mean, I felt it was a serious request, and it's why we asked for shadow studies, and we received them, and, you know, to look at them doesn't show anything alarming. I went and looked at one of the model units on the Maple Street side of Pearson Square, and, you know, this is subjective, but basically concluded that, you know, a nice-looking urban-style building across the street from Pearson Square, I hope, I think, will enhance the value of those units and certainly create the whole project, the two buildings together, a real center of activity in a part of town where, you know, that's going to be a big asset, I think. So, but we do obviously appreciate hearing from all the folks who live at Pearson Square. And as we go forward with construction, I would say also, there'll be some mitigation issues, I'm sure, whenever you're building a big building, and obviously, folks at Pearson Square, we want to make sure that they're consulted and any disruption is minimized to the extent possible. I already spoke about the money coming in, that's very important. A lot of folks say, you know, why are we, why are we building these buildings when we have crowded schools? Well, you know, there's some money involved here, as I mentioned earlier, that covers all public service costs. Maybe some of my other colleagues might speak to the net annual fiscal impact, and on that I'll close. You know, it could be as low as $100,000, as the mayor said, could be as high as a million. But whatever it is, I have confidence, after many conversations with Mr. Rose, Mr. Waghorn, and the team, that they're, you know, highly competent to deliver us terrific ground-floor retail. And it's good that we have high confidence because, or that I have high confidence, because we have very, very high expectations. You know, eventually, we fill the ground-floor retail here and the buildings that we build, that's our experience, but in this building, it's very important that, you know, it might be eventually, but it'd be, you know, as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other council members? Mr. Pepe?
My left, I'll lean over. I agree with everything that was already said. I especially agree with what Ms. Barry said about the support we have seen from other businesses and groups, which is good, because that's something we need to hear, and it's a constituency we don't always hear from. But I also wanted to add that when you, when you look at this, you know, we have people with differing opinions, and some of the letters come down to people saying, "I don't think this is what I want False Church to look like." And that's, that's a very subjective consideration. I'm intending to vote in favor of this, not just because of the money, I think that's good and lets us do things, but because I think this is the kind of development that I would like to have around me and the kind of community I would want to live in. And not everybody agrees with that, but that's part of my consideration, weighing the pros and cons and hearing what everybody's saying. I think that kind of growth and development is a natural evolution of where we're going, given our location and our demographics and so on, and I'd like to facilitate that in a constructive way rather than other things that could happen if we, if we don't embrace it.
Other council members?
Sure. First, I'd like to thank the development, the developers' team. I know they spent many, many months involved with the city and council and committees. I know in the EDC, the EDC, as you mentioned, are, we've been talking about this for, I'm sure, well over a year. So I appreciate your patience and your perseverance. You put together a first-rate team of attorneys, architects, engineers, and other consultants, and they've worked very hard. I think this is a good project. It's not perfect, but it represents a major improvement to this gateway to the city. And it is a major gateway. People, plenty of people come through into False Church through that side, and this is going to make a great change, I think, to that area. The grocery store is a unique niche player, and I think it'll bring customers into the city from throughout the area. It's not another Giant or Safeway, but it's a unique store that I think people will drive a distance to come to, and so I think that's, it's a strong selling point. I think this would be a catalyst for redevelopment of this immediate area, and the new pedestrian improvements, I think, are great. New stoplights are much needed for this area, the traffic is flying down Lee Highway, and I think the traffic lights that are proposed will be quite good in slowing down traffic where it needs to be slowed down. The new open space, even though it's a small park, it still isn't much appreciated. The type of retail, I think, is interesting, it's a neat experiment. It remains to be seen how it's going to play out, but I appreciate the effort, and I appreciate trying to enliven Maple more than you did at the start. So, again, my thanks, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Other council members? All right, I just wanted to make some brief comments and echo some points that I've made before. I think this is an area of the city that definitely needs some revitalization and a kickstart, so I'm really excited about the project and the prospects of redeveloping that entire corridor. A couple specifics about the projects that I think are appealing. I've yet to figure out how you all managed to do the parking and hitting the full code requirements, given the land you had to purchase, et cetera, and still make it happen. Again, we've seen numerous projects that always seem to request significant parking reductions and waivers. So I, again, encourage you to talk to our staff and talk to your other fellow developers, and I think that's a huge issue that the city's going to continue to face, so I commend you for however it is that you work that magic formula. Two is the point about the park, I think the developer's making a substantial contribution to open space, something that they didn't necessarily need to do. The park, the land that's going to be used for park can't really be used for anything else because of the plant is not available. The developer didn't need to purchase it for their project, but yet chose to do so. I understand that there was some encouragement to have that happen and bringing that forward, I think it's substantial. I think that's about a $2 million community benefit, and is a huge asset to the community at large, not just for the tenants of your project, but certainly Pearson and the adjacent properties as well, and desperately needed on the city's part. So thank you for bringing that forward, and I hope other developers follow suit on that. Third, I already commented on, on that location as well. Finally, four, which is the grocery store, which is really the heart of this project and is critical, as was provided in the motion that preceded Mr. Kalen's motion on this project. I'll just state that, yes, I sort of said it in jest, trying to get the $100,000 figure of the worst, worst, worst-case scenario, but I just wanted to echo and make sure that the legislative record is clear on this point. After consulting with staff and certainly the developer, it's my understanding that this project would not and will not go forward without a grocery store component there. So I just want that to be absolutely clear. If that's not clear, I hope we hear it from the developer this evening, because my vote is resting on that. And dare I say, I believe, based on the motion that we had this evening, the entire council's vote is based on that aspect. So, again, just so the record is clear, certainly, I don't believe that this project is going to go forward without, without the grocery store, and that's not the intent of the actions we'll be taking this evening. So anything further by council members before we take the vote on this? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just very quickly, I want to, I want to echo everything that was said, and I'm not going to repeat it, the meeting's gone on long enough, for sure, but I do want to point out especially your sensitivity to the cultural and historic resources of the community, and that's much appreciated in addition to the financial contributions you'll be making and the vibrancy that you'll be bringing with the grocery stores. So, thank you.
Have their roll call vote, please.
Why don't, should I do each of them separately, Mr. City Attorney? Each of the resolutions should be voted on separately, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, on TR 13-07, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Burri?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. On TR 13-06, Ms. Barry?
As amended.
As amended. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Burri?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right, what I propose that we do is take a recess until 9:30 so we can regroup and get the other presentation ready. So we're in recess until 9:30?
...on the approximately 2.6 acres of land located at 255 and 301 West Broad Street, known as 301 West Broad Street by Rushmark Properties LLC. I left off the property code numbers. You don't need those, I don't think.
Mayor Baruch and members of council, on this item, as with the last, what the council has at the dais is a resolution that was revised slightly by the city attorney with updating the dates of various different documents. And that is on the council's dais, along with the voluntary concessions dated May 13th. For this project, we again have been working for a long time with the developer to bring this project to this point before the council for final adoption tonight. With all of our SE applications, we work with the community, with the developer, to try to arrive at a project that is market feasible, in other words, that it can be built, that meets community needs, and drives the city's fiscal condition and its economic engine. And this project, we believe, does those things. And I think very importantly for a downtown area to bring a retail use of the caliber of a grocery store that is proposed for this project will be very important for our downtown area, and important for surrounding businesses and future redevelopment in the area. We have in the staff report the details of the primary and secretary conditions analysis and the voluntary concessions, and I'll ask Gary Fuller to provide that staff report. And then we will hear also on the fiscal impact for this project from Rick Golf, and then hear from the developer, and then hear public comment. So if I could ask Gary Fuller to provide the staff report on this project. The staff report recommendation is approval of the resolution at tonight's meeting. Mr. Fuller.
The request is from Rushmark Properties. They're the applicant. The request is a special exception to allow for residential uses in a mixed-use project, as well as a height bonus of 15 feet for a total height of 90 feet for the proposed project, and the address is 255 and 301 West Broad Street. The staff is recommending the city council discuss this special exception application and take final action improving this special exception this evening and the associated resolution. The final special exception package includes a booklet, a binder, a plan set, set of voluntary concessions dated May 13th, which includes numerous community benefits, some terms, and a condition sheet. And then there was also an errata sheet, and these are your attachments, one through five, and so these constitute the actual package of record tonight that you will be considering. The recent and final now voluntary concessions, they're an attachment four by the applicant, has resulted from extensive negotiations between the city and the applicant, and guidance from city council, most recently in your work session, and subsequent recommendations since then, your work session being held on May 6th. Modifications to this special exception application resulted from these negotiations, and the modifications resulted in some numerical changes. I'll highlight those, and then I'll talk about the voluntary concessions as well. The modifications resulted in a residential unit count change of plus six units. Parking ratios were 1.3 for residential. They're now 1.2 for the multifamily unit mix. There were a change in the mix of these residential units. There are now 12 more efficiency one-bedroom units and six less two-bedroom units. The affordable housing units have been modified for a range of 60, 80, and 100% of AMI. The fiscal impact and revenues have increased by about $40,000 annually with these changes that I was just referring to. There's also future traffic improvement funding that's being provided in the amount of $100,000, plus additional funds potentially from leftover from some West Broad Street improvements that are also an objective. And in addition, there was a park contribution, and a pest control plan was added for when the buildings demolished and the land disturbance occurs. And there was additional considerations in the voluntary concessions that were added for a public parking concept and a bike sharing concept that'll be looked at in the interim, and various other community benefits. The city council at May 6th work session had several requests and referrals to staff. The city staff looked at those last week over a two-day period and responded in an attachment six that's provided in your package. So those questions have been addressed that you raised at your work session. The few minor revisions to the special exception package, which was submitted on May 1, were primary technical and administrative cleanup items, really, and they're related to the conceptual plan documents. A cover letter highlights those dated May 1. That was an attachment two. The special exception application itself involves three subject properties, which are zoned B2, which is central business district. The designated mixed use on the comprehensive plan, future land use map is the designation for the property. Proposed mixed-use project would involve about 370, 2,000 square feet of new building construction at a maximum of 90 feet, a grocery store of approximately 60,000 square feet, and some additional commercial retail space fronting on West Broad, just under 3,500 square feet, and 288 multifamily rental units, including 17 affordable units within those. There's three levels of underground parking with a total of 554 spaces, and concrete construction versus wooden stick-built structure as proposed for this project. The special exception would require two approvals, one for residential uses within a mixed-use development, and secondly, the height bonus of additional 15 feet where the current 75 feet is the maximum height in a B2 district. They're asking for 15 additional for a total of 90 feet, and the special exception criteria allows for consideration up to 115 feet by special exception. Board and commission comments were received, and you received all but one of them, which I think you received in the last few days from the Environmental Services Council. The others from the Planning Commission Architectural Review Board, the CSET, the EDA, the Housing Commission, Human Services Advisory Council, Parks and Recreation Board, the Chamber of Commerce, BPIS, and were all communicated to you at your work session on May 6th. The Planning Commission, which is a mandatory recommendation to you, held its advertised public hearing on April 15th, recommended the council that the special exception and resolution be approved. They voted unanimously recommending this. They also expressed strong support for the voluntary concessions, which were in a draft for city response form on April 9th, and those were communicated to the developer, and subsequently further negotiations occurred on that. Just to highlight the voluntary concessions, they consist of 20 voluntary concessions and related community benefits, and about eight terms and conditions that are related to the SE. A third of these voluntary concessions, community benefits are new in the last month, and another third have been revised. These are in support of the project, the special exception secondary criteria that's part of the evaluation and impact mitigation in general community benefits. And the applicants offered streetscape. We have an adopted streetscape plan for West Broad Street. They're gonna implement that and construct that per that document, and that's our city policy. That's a 14-foot standard. They have agreed to do a 20-foot width of this version. Terms of school capital cost contribution, initially, they were looking at this as a contribution to the city's community benefit. They've now formalized that with $7,511 per market unit. The underground parking is a three levels, below grade, with the 554 spaces. Also, there was some West Broad Street pedestrian improvements. We have an existing crosswalk there in front of the post office, and a crosswalk with some safety features going across Little Falls. We're looking to get the Little Falls version upgraded, similar to the one that's crossing Broad, and then a parallel one on the other side of the intersection, so the entire intersection would be upgraded with pedestrian improvements. So that's been added, included by the developer at this point. In addition, also new is pedestrian improvements, a mid-block pedestrian crossing down on West Annandale Road. That was not in their initial voluntary concessions either. On transportation, in terms of mitigation of potential traffic impacts, they have looked at several concepts. At this point, we thought it was prudent to have a post-development survey, so once the project is built and the traffic circulation is in place, there'll be a post-development traffic survey done, and then at that point, we'll look at mitigation measures that are appropriate for that. They've allocated $100,000 to that, plus any unspent funds from the West Broad Street left-turn concept that they want to continue to explore could also be used to supplement those funds, and they've agreed to that. That is new. The lead criteria for potential environmental design benefits, they have committed to certify. Initially, they were looking at silver. They're still gonna pursue that as a concept, but at this point, they're gonna bond and confirm that they'll do certified level. On the transportation demand management, they've developed a TDM plan. They have a draft of that. They've upgraded that, and will continue to work with them through site plan to finalize that. The affordable housing units, as I mentioned before, promote affordable housing in the community. They're allocating 6% of their units, which is 17 units, to affordable housing. They'll provide for a range of affordable housing at 60, 80, and 100% of AMI. Parks and Recreation, in order to promote enhanced community facilities in the vicinity, they're contributing $50,000 towards Big Chimmy's Park for enhancements to that, along with capital improvements that the city is planning to do in the future. New is a residential phasing occupancy terms, and what that was in regard to is to ensure that the commercial development occurs with the residential. So there's a clause in the voluntary concessions addressing that. Excavation monitoring, as they dig and do the below-grade construction, there'll be a post-development survey and document the adjacent structures within a certain distance, and there's a mechanism and program for addressing any issues that might arise out of that, and insurance is posted. There's also a new addition of a community liaison during the construction period. We've added that to have the communication in place during that period, which could last a couple of years. Underground overhead utilities, there is an off-site pole over in the Winter Hill community. With their permission, they would underground that as part of their undergrounding. There are no overhead lines going along West Broad Street in this particular site. The left turn on West Broad Street is a concept that the developer would like to continue to pursue. Staff has looked at that, and their consultants looked at that. It would require a waiver or an exception from VDOT due to the West Broad Street classification as a state highway, and that's a long process, could last anywhere from six to nine months. And so at this point, it's not an immediate consideration, but it's something that they're looking to pursue. They've allocated $200,000 towards any improvements that would be associated with that approval. Bicycle storage, they have over 100 facilities internal to the building and additional facilities out in the streetscape. And in addition to that, they're willing to consider other facilities, and there's an interim review period in which they would continue to look at additional facilities. They're also including new electric vehicle charging station. There's actually a pair of those that would be provided on site. As I mentioned earlier, there's pest control that's new, that's been added to terms of the land disturbing activities and any need in elimination of rodents that may come out of the site during the construction. Then our grocery store condition was added to ensure that the grocery store is part of the final commercial elements of this. And lastly, there are a number of terms and conditions that are listed at the bottom of the voluntary concessions that address other issues that are associated with this project. Just to wrap up, in the future, the Planning Commission would review these plans for conformance with any approvals of the special exception, and they'd be related to final approvals of any site plan, landscape plan, streetscape plan, architectural plans, the final parking ratios, the landscape buffers, any waivers associated with the landscape buffers, and commercial entrances. Those would all be part of the work the Planning Commission does post any approvals of special exceptions, and they, you know, their role is to enforce the special exceptions along with staff. And this includes voluntary concessions as well. And the final traffic mitigation measures, which we alluded to, that would be a post-development, those would potentially be a site plan amendment, once those are finalized, and we would associate those with the plan formally later. And final, the fiscal impact was updated to reflect the recent changes, and based on that, the project expected to generate over 1.3 million. An additional 40,000 was estimated based on these recent modifications to the plans for this project. That's my staff report for this evening. I'd be happy to take any comments, questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Councilmembers, any questions to the staff before we open up the public? I had just a couple of technical points that I just wanted some clarification on before we turn into any comments. First was, I know that some of the depictions and perhaps the applicant's gonna be going through those still show some blank walls, dealing where the parking deck is, and also where the back of the Harris teeter is, and I know that there's been discussions that's still being worked. I just wanted to be clear that, based on what I've read in the packet and what the developer's committed to, we're looking at four-sided architecture, so perhaps during that discussion, I understand from staff that there's revisions happening to that. We can speak a little bit more about that in general. I know that that's gonna ultimately be a site plan issue, but I do want to get an indication from the developer about where they're at and what they're committing to doing at site plan, so we're not surprised later on, because again, that's gonna be such a critical corridor on all sides moving forward. Two, this is more of a staff question. We've talked a lot during the last year or more about stormwater mitigation, and one thing I noticed as I was going through the packet, that sort of figured that this was already pretty impervious, but when I read the packet, it looks like we're adding more impervious surface to the sites right now, and I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to address stormwater in a meaningful way on this site, and that we're not compounding problems.
Yes, I mean, that'll be detailed at a subsequent site plan. At this point, stormwater calculations are not provided, detailed engineering on the conceptual plan. And you're correct in that the pedonlin property that the EDA owns is partially wooded, and you know, that would be changed to impervious surface. So the city staff would address that. We have state code that, you know, there's no net increase, and then there's even additional reductions that are required, so they'll have to let less come off that site than currently now does at the end of the day. So there's the code in place for that.
Right, and I would just say, as far as our ordinance goes, there are some benefits into putting in measures to improve water quality, which give credit essentially for stormwater, and those have now been approved. I believe we're working on some of the credits now, so that's something that the applicant may want to think about. I know that if this does go forward, they're gonna want to start the site plan approval process, so I would just note that that's, I'm sure it's something that you all are aware of and are following. But my hope is that with future infill development on the commercial side and on the residential side, that we have developers take a look at those credits and utilize them. So I'd certainly be interested in hearing from staff about how that's working up, because this may be the first project where that's actually considered in a larger scale. So if we need to make some adjustments, this may be a good test case, but just wanted to reiterate publicly our commitment and the council's commitment on stormwater. I know, again, it's gonna be a site plan issue, but it's something that we haven't really discussed with the applicant, but I think it's really important for the city, and hopefully the applicant will just know what's happened in our deliberations. Again, it hasn't come up in this project, but it has been front and center on council's mind during the budget process and before that as well. Third is landscape buffers. I know, again, that's gonna be an issue that's gonna be ongoing, so I take that site plan, Gary, that's gonna address sort of what the buffering is gonna be look like.
Conceptually, they've shown the correct widths and the general amount of material. There's obviously specifications for that. The harvest will be working with them on that, and so they technically are meeting those features at this point.
Great. And then I know that we're gonna talk about drive aisles, so I'll just, we'll get to that later. There was indication in the staff report that there were changes made to the Harris teeter HVAC locations, and perhaps the developer can just point those out. I think that that was one of the changes. There might have been some architectural areas that were changed, so if we can highlight those too, I think that would be helpful. And then from staff's perspective this evening, we talked about the parking reduction. I believe you said that the ratio would be 0.1 or 1.2 overall. Is it staff's opinion that that's still a workable residential ratio?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And I know that there'd been some discussion with city staff about mitigating any spillover measures that that may result. I just wanted to get a comment from the city manager and perhaps planning staff about that.
We have, we've given that a lot of thought, and we'll want to engage with the community on that in terms of appropriate steps to, as density increases in the environment of Winter Hill, how we can, the city can play its role to ensure that there aren't adverse impacts on parking within Winter Hill. And we do have a good toolkit of things that we can use under state law, and we have used in other parts of the city, and so as we move along, we can engage with the community on some of the things that we could do to address any problems as they may arise.
And Mr. Shields, I understand that a lot of those are administrative, some are council. I just want to get a sense, is the city manager in your office, are you prepared to take those on, working with the larger community, not just Winter Hill, but there could be other spillover impacts?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and finally, or actually, two last points, and I think we may have discussed this before, just so the community has a sense, what are the height comparables that we're looking at at 90 feet? I believe that's about the height of the spectrum?
Yes, in terms of the spectrum, that project is approved at 85 feet. The Byron's also at 85 feet. Those are in zones that the underlying zoning initially limited them to 55 feet, and so they utilized the entire 30-foot bonus criteria in both those special exceptions. In this case, we're in the higher density zone, the B2, which is our central business district downtown area. The by right height under the existing zoning is 75 feet. The applicant's asking for an additional 15 feet of a possible 40, up to 115, which is permitted under the special exception, in terms of a range of considerations.
But the applicant's asking up to 90?
Up to 90.
Is there anything in the city that's at 90 right now?
No, no. Everything's about five feet under that.
Okay. And then how does that compare as far as FARs?
It was similar. I've got a chart I can look at real quick. Let's see. In terms of FAR, the spectrum, for example, was about 2.55, and that included the building with the Panera and Office as well, and then the Byron was 1.76.
And this is what?
This is FAR that you asked about.
The Rushmark project, what is that?
Oh, yeah, the Rushmark project is 3.25, and the Lincoln project is 2.98.
So this is roughly the density of the spectrum is what we're looking at, just so the community has a sense of what this looks like at the end of the day.
And one thing I will note, the earlier approvals for the city center area had an FAR of 3.6, so this is slightly lower than that.
But it's not inconsistent with what we've done with some recent projects, is the point that I'm getting at. And then finally, the new issue that's come up for the left-hand turn, certainly I appreciate, you know, I think that it's got a lot of benefit for the project and certainly for the community, just handling the traffic, and I'll comment more on that later. But as far as the dollars and cents, I saw that it added that it's up to $200,000, based on my experience being on the council for a number of years and how much consultants cost, which shocks me every day when we get proposals. One that I think is coming up later after this, dealing with the library study. Is $200,000 gonna get us to where we need to be to try to make this left-hand turn happen? Because I think that there is gonna be a motion that's gonna come up about council supporting such a notion, but I just want to make sure that there's enough money, given what I've heard about how arduous this process is about VDOT, so.
One thing that I would just note on that voluntary concession, it does note that the developer has budgeted $200,000 for it, and we asked for that because there's another provision in the VCs that say any funds unspent from that budget for the left-hand turn could be allocated for other transportation improvements. But that voluntary concession says that the developer's gonna pursue the left-hand turn, so if it's in addition to $200,000, the developer's gonna make sure that the left-hand turn happens, assuming we get the VDOT proffers, but that just means there would not be any funds left over for other transportation.
Got it, okay. So it's not a cap of $200,000. It's essentially, if anything's more, the city doesn't get any piece of that for other developments, so, Gary?
Well, in terms of, the developer's saying that's, you know, that's the hard cost, and they're gonna take care of that.
They're gonna, even if it exceeds $200,000?
Yeah, for $200,000, that's actually four hard costs. It's open cost, it's open target, and I have to add you.
So you're committed to?
For real, three hard costs.
I see, okay. So you're prepared to do more if need be to make that happen? Okay, great. Those are all the questions that I had. Other councilmembers? West Mayor's side?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. A couple more questions, Gary. First of all, concern has been expressed about rodent control during construction and afterwards. Comment on that, please.
In terms of that, we have a voluntary concession that's now included that would have a certified company come out, do an inspection of the site, recommend a program for rodent infestation, elimination. The developer would pay for that and implement that, and that would be subject to coordination with the city. Right now, there is no requirement when you come in for a demolition permit or any type of other land disturbing activities to address that issue in our city code, so this is a voluntary concession that the developers agreed to do.
Okay, and I'll ask if there's a rodent control program afterwards, and I think there will be, but we can get to that in a minute. Noise with respect to noise during and after construction?
Well, in terms of the voluntary concessions, you're talking about after construction's completed, when the operations are in place?
During construction and then after.
And, okay. The noise ordinance is part of the city code, and that's in place, and that has the specific times that are indicated in the voluntary concessions right now during the weekday and weekend hours and holidays. And so that's been specified in the voluntary concessions to mirror that. That's a separate enforcement thing that staff is involved in, I think, from the police standpoint and zoning, and so, you know, those would be the enforcement measures. We've added an additional element during construction and post-construction where you had a, you have during the construction, a coordinator, liaison with the community to address issues initially, and then after the development is in place and the building's operational, there's gonna be a management. to be a management coordinator on site, probably from the Harris Teeter team, that would be first contact for any issues related to that before it gets elevated to city level.
Thank you. Final question, damage to adjoining houses during construction.
We've used the language from the Northgate project and that's been volunteered by the developer, so it'd be a pre-development survey of certain properties within a specified distance that were standard in that Northgate project. And so those would be documented, there'd be insurance posted, and then a professional engineering consultant, who's an independent consultant, would do the inspection afterwards, post-development, and, you know, their license and bonded. And so they would be looking at it as a third party and making final recommendations on that.
My understanding is the city has to approve that engineer, is that right?
Yeah, we had added some language that that professional engineering company is subject to the city's approvals as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. The only other point I'd make while we're speaking to city representatives again is the importance of parking and transportation management around that site. Thank you.
Other council member questions?
Because to make sure I understand the delivery and loading, VC, the delivery, thank you, the delivery and loading, that's what you're talking about, number 11? So it refers to tractor-trailer truck deliveries and trash trucks between 7 and 9 on weekdays and 9 to 9 on Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. Is that inclusive of all deliveries or could smaller non-tractor-trailer trucks deliver in earlier hours?
That would be, you know, all delivery trucks is covered under that, which I think the estimate was about 14 panel trucks daily and two tractor-trailer models, some earlier estimates that I heard.
Okay. Thanks. So we're talking about, just so we're clear on this point, it's all truck deliveries, not just sort of semis or larger vehicles? Is that right, Gary?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Other council member? All right, why don't we begin the public hearing process and then we'll go ahead and take motions subsequent to that if that's agreeable to council members? All right. The first speaker slip that I have is from Deborah Howell, followed by Tom Giddens.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Falls Church City Council. My name is Deborah Howell. I live at 167 West Anandale Road. I'm here as an owner of a residential property that directly abuts the proposed Rushmark-Harris Teeter project. I would like to voice my support for the revised rear drive aisle plan for the rear entrance of this property. It's the one that empties out directly onto West Anandale Road. The revised drive aisle plan will, let's see, the revised drive aisle plan will make the 3,000 to 4,500 cars that are projected to come in and out of this project per day simply move to a drive aisle that is further away from our existing properties. This issue is paramount, of paramount importance to our neighbors and the existing surrounding area. It will provide tremendous quality of life improvement over the original plan. Furthermore, this revised plan was agreed to by Rushmark and Harris Teeter as feasible a mere four weeks ago. I would also ask the council and the mayor to recognize as artificial any sort of relationship between the revised plan and the proposed left turn off of Broad Street. They are separable issues and should be considered separably. Separately, excuse me. So in conclusion, I would urge the council to approve the special exceptions as long as they include the revised drive aisle plan. Thank you.
And I have to apologize, due to my, let's just chalk it up to lack of sleep, I just realized that I didn't give the applicant an opportunity to make their presentation. So I duly apologize to the public, my fellow council members, and certainly the developer. So I'm surprised that nobody caught me on that, but let's, maybe the development team did notice, but I just realized Patrick was looking very happy over there for a second. So I apologize for going a little out of order, so.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, but we'll definitely have your comments on the record and Tom will take you as soon as the applicant's done with their presentation. So thank you very much.
Do you want us to go now, Mr. Mayor?
That would be good.
Okay.
I assure you, there's nowhere we'd rather be, so. I actually thought it would be instructive, as staff was also doing, to perhaps pick up where we sort of left off last Monday at the work session. And we will do our level best not to cover ground that's already been covered. But I think as you heard from staff, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of points, there have been some meaningful evolutions even since Monday. And I would call the council's attention to the further restriction in delivery hours that was noted, certainly the commitment to work collaboratively with the city on a public parking solution, which you heard very directly from your EDA chairman about last Monday. You've heard about enhanced efforts to make the left turn lane work that are reflected in the voluntary concessions. And as we reflect on that issue, I think it's worth noting that all of us have been working for the better part of a year to try to find ways to reduce traffic on Anandale Road. And I would remind the council that that improvement alone, if we're successful, takes 1,500 cars off of Anandale Road. We're also going to show you some minor enhancements to landscaping. I think we've made some progress in the blank wall that was referred to earlier. I've got a couple of pictures to show you there. And you heard from staff that we now have voluntary concessions dealing with excavation monitoring, also a uniform point of contact on the development team throughout the entire development process, which is the proper thing to do and the right thing to do. I also wanted to take a half a step back and I guess remind all of us that this is a property that is commercially zoned. We are not changing the zoning of the property. And as the adage goes, something is going to happen here. And I would respectfully suggest that the post office deciding to leave is perhaps an opportunity. And given the fact the property is commercially zoned, this could go a number of different ways. It could certainly redevelop under existing zoning. The unfortunate effect there would be to defer the amenitized redevelopment for up to another 15 or 20 years while you wait for assets to again depreciate. Alternatively, you have a project before you that meets all the guidelines of your conference plan as explained by staff and in and of itself is one of the single most meaningful economic development proposals that have come to the city in a long, long time. You certainly have a level of regulation and mitigation and certainty well beyond what would occur in those by right scenarios. And as I've said to the commission, planning commission, and said to this council before, I think it's indicative of a process that has worked and worked well. I'm going to briefly walk through a few slides. The background, if nothing more, shows you it's a thorough process. And I think it's interesting that some of the strongest support for this project has come from the very boards and commissions that are assigned to give advice to this council. You've read those materials and you've heard reference to them as we've gone through the process. We've had an equal engagement with the community. They've been very generous and very productive with their time and their comments. In terms of the attributes, I'm not going to hit all of these point by point. The fiscal impact has been noted by staff. We restated here, 1.36 million per year, very meaningful. I would again call the council's attention to the full enclosure of the loading dock. That is roughly a $1 million investment in and of itself to try to solve those issues, very groundbreaking, and I think very, very positive precedent as you deal with other redevelopment issues down the road. You've heard about the transportation demand and management program. We think it's also groundbreaking and very productive and is enhanced in the last week or so as well. We've got a number of slides you've seen before talking about connectivity in the neighborhood. It's a simple desire to balance pedestrian movements, automobile movements. And we've been straightforward with the community in terms of wanting to provide a number of pedestrian ways to access this site and its amenities. And again, you've seen these before in terms of well-designed walkways, well-shaded walkways, and incorporating those amenities into a good landscape scheme. This is an upgrade of some of the landscaping even since Monday, reflective of the additive input from Studio 39, which is probably the leading landscape architecture firm in Northern Virginia. They'll be working with us throughout the site plan process. And again, just shows further refinement of those concepts. I did want to pause on this just for a minute. This is, I guess if you will, an enhancement of the left turn concept, showing an option with more stacking that was a concern expressed at the work session. As you recall, the concept we originally showed you, we think also can work and work well, but this is an, again, if stacking was the priority, just shows another way to sort of skin the same proverbial cat. And again, 1,500 cars roughly per day coming off Anandale Road if we can make this work. And as you've heard from, you've heard from me and you've heard from Patrick, we're firm in our commitment to trying to make this happen. Reordering you to the retail space, again, just giving you a sense of the Harris Teeter and that enclosed loading dock. Again, the residential floor plate, if nothing more, this shows you how the intensity and the height is strategically located. This is a building that does not have all of its height at the edges. The height has strategically been pulled forward. Also gets at some of the stagger concepts that we've worked very close with the staff on over the lengthy review process. You've seen these sections before. And as I go through the architecture, I show these just to, again, put the project back in context. And I did want to state very clearly for the record, in response to the mayor's question, this will be absolutely four-sided architecture. That's what we'll bring forward in the site plan process and it's collectively is important to Rushmark, I think, as it is the community. And you get a flavor of that architectural quality, again, with a lot of good input from your architectural board review as well. And this is enhanced some, this is some evolution on that Anandale roadside even since Monday. And obviously, we'll continue to work on it and continue to work collaboratively with the city as we go forward. So as I close this part of the presentation, I wanted to do a couple of things. I wanted to, I guess, restate that time is absolutely of the essence. If we had the chance, we would start this tomorrow if the process would allow and Harris Teeter would like to open tomorrow. I did think it was interesting, in the prior public hearing, there was a comment from one of the speakers talking about a number of projects that had not proceeded for any number of reasons. And I want the council to understand that throughout these collective negotiations, our goal on the Rushmark side is to simply bend to deliver this project. And to that end, we owe tremendous thanks to the staff, the community, all the boards and commissions, and certainly this council. And you've been very generous with your time. This is a better project as a result of the process and we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Any questions directly to the applicant? Gary, did you have something else?
I just had one comment. In terms of the question from Councilmember Snyder, in regard to the access restricted times for trucks, I was looking at that and there's two different types of vehicles that are specified. It's the large tractor-trailer deliveries and trash trucks. So it's not specific to other types of trucks. So that's what the current language is. I just wanted that to be corrected for the record. Thank you.
And I believe Mr. Duncan commented on that as well. So are we talking about other types of deliveries can be done earlier?
In terms of the actual voluntary restrictions the developer's placed on itself, it's for tractor-trailer trucks and trash trucks for the use of the service drive.
Shield?
The reason we have this in here and in the city noise ordinance, there's very clear clause on construction. And construction has to be constrained to these timelines. For deliveries, in the code, it doesn't set times. It sets decibel levels at the property line in terms of what noise you can generate on a site and if it goes over the property line, what happens. That's very difficult to enforce. You have to go to the property line with a device to try to measure noise and it's one that we have found very difficult to enforce throughout the city. So what we've tried to do with this is just take a clear standard and apply that construction standard to the heavier impact delivery schedule so that we won't get into that decibel meter enforcement aspect, but instead just set times to it. And so that's what this language attempts to do.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know where other council members are on this, but what I had heard earlier, that notion was that that restriction was in place for all types of trucks. But the language looks like tractor-trailer trucks. And I don't think we've had sort of a discussion about what we mean by tractor-trailer trucks. And I'm hearing now that there is a differentiation possibly between tractor-trailer trucks and other trucks, so.
You want me to try and speak to that? I think everyone was focusing on the hours and not actually what type of trucks were coming through. And this was part of the negotiation with Harris Teeter and what they wanted. And there was some pushback really on just Saturday morning hours. I don't think there was really any disagreement or discussion about what types of trucks were coming through at certain times. So we really didn't aggress it the way you were focusing on it, whether it was tractor-trailers or not. It was really delivery hours. And the real question was what was happening Saturday mornings because they wanted the ability to do some deliveries, but not with tractor-trailers on Saturday mornings. So this is probably something that can get worked out after the fact with Harris Teeter to prefer. I don't really have a dog in the hunt, if you know what I mean. It was really kind of a Harris Teeter concern versus city concern versus neighbors' concerns on noise.
So can we live with, just to be clear, and they can come back if they choose to, just with trucks, just so we're clear?
I think we can. I think they may come back with an issue on Saturday mornings, but I don't see why you couldn't handle that later.
Okay. So would it be acceptable just to bring that back if we need to? On the Saturday mornings?
What do you mean by bring it back? You're asking him, not me.
Well, the question is to bring the whole SE back to the city council?
No, just be this, they can amend that if we needed to.
Yeah. I think we should. I think we should engage with Harris Teeter on this issue and just see if there's an issue. I think in the original drafting, the intent was trucks, but, or deliveries, but what the wording is right now is tractor-trailers.
So why don't we do it as trucks and then if we need to take it up, if there's a problem, we'll take it up later? Is that acceptable to the applicant?
We didn't do the wording, I don't think. I think that came out of staff.
Okay. So is that, can we do that? Is council member supportive of that, if we make that edit?
Yes.
So I think that would just be trucks and if we need to make adjustments, we will if there's an issue that comes up.
There's one other thing I'd like to bring up, just as part of our presentation, because I think it's going to come up, and that is the drive aisle issue. Just to give you a little history about, from our perspective, what happened there. Obviously, the location of the loading dock has been a major concern in the neighborhood on this from the get-go, which we've tried to alleviate as much as possible. And the drive aisle location was part of that. At one point in this with the neighbors, they suggested changing the access for Harris Teeter patrons from curb cut closest to Winter Hill to the curb cut that was going to be our curb cut into our garage for residential only, which we looked at, we found a way to make that work through ramping within the garage. Harris Teeter did not like that plan. It created some issues with regard to ramping in their garage and 6% grades where the carts might get away from them. And also, it created a dead-end corridor within the garage. I never really got fully approval of that plan. They did make the comment that they would only consider that plan if we got the left turn in off of Broad. And about the same time I got that kind of feedback, we went in front of the planning commission, who didn't think we needed to move the drive aisle at all and didn't really like the ramping of it, and recommended that we not pursue that issue. So that's why we kind of went back to the plan that we had before on the drive aisle. So just so everyone understands, kind of from our perspective, the left turn in off of Broad won't get resolved between now and this vote. And it will require, it will require VDOT input and approval. I think we've made a lot of progress on the left turn off of Broad. I think it's something that's going to do and it's something that we're willing to pay for because we think it increases the value of the project and is a big benefit to Harris Teeter and everyone. But it was hard for us to get Harris Teeter to approve and to make the change without knowing whether the left turn off of Broad was going to happen. And then the other issue that came up was this excess parking potential the city wants for public uses. And when you go and move the drive aisle and put in the ramp, it makes that even more problematic in terms of a management perspective and how to put the gates. And it would, Harris Teeter has some issues, again, with public parking bleeding into their parking. So from our perspective, we kind of went back to what the planning commission was telling us, we should go back to what we'd presented before and what we thought could get approved to kind of get this thing moving. Is that a fair assessment there? So I think we're going to get some comments. I know there are some neighbors that aren't pleased with where this sits with regard to the drive aisle. I just wanted to tell you, kind of from our perspective... I just wanted to tell you, kind of from our perspective, how we got to where we did.
Councilmember questions for the applicant? I did have one follow-up on that. Staff can let us know when, and I don't have it in front of me, when the planning commission took up the vote on the SE.
It was on April 15th, ahead of the public hearing, and the amendments in the synopsis are in your attachment.
Okay. And it was subsequent to that, because there is an April 22nd memo that touches upon the drive aisle issue. Is that not right? So they didn't have the benefit of the staff report that highlights numerous things, including the drive aisle?
Terms of the staff report from Public Works, is that from one of your papers?
Yes.
Yeah. They did not have that.
And there was some discussion about safety issues and combining it, and some beneficial aspects of combining those drive aisles. So the planning commission did not have that analysis before?
They did not.
All right. And those went directly to public safety and traffic issues, et cetera?
Those, that memo was addressing all the different traffic concepts that were being explored. There was the combining of the two entrances on Annandale. There was a traffic circle concept that was in the original city center plan. There was the left turn. Their traffic consultant had done analysis of all those in detail and provided that. We were also talking about TDMs, and there were several other, they were all traffic-related issues. So there's about a half dozen things that we had looked at and met with the applicant, and that was the memo that was summarizing their positions on that after those discussions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor's time.
I guess the key line in the April 22nd memo, and this is from Kirsten Muntz and Bill Hicks to you, Gary.
Yes.
Is, "Staff concurs the consolidation of the access points on Annandale Road is preferable and a safer condition for all modes of travel."
That's their statement, yes.
So what's before us today is a less safe alternative?
I mean, I have to look at the context of that, but I know they were addressing it in terms of the left turn lane as well. I don't think they were doing that independently.
Well.
I recall.
I think it raises a serious question. We'll get to that.
Okay.
Anything else by council members? And one other question that I had, and this is perhaps a minor point, but I just want to make sure it's in fact is minor as far as the design changes. This is on the HVAC location. It shows, it sort of shows up throughout the documents that we received in our packets.
The orientation of the HVAC for the Harris Teeter store was previously more on the frontage on Annandale. We've moved it around the side a little bit, which changes the architecture of what the building looks like on Annandale. We just showed you a depiction of that. It's not a major change. It's something that's going to go in front of the architectural review board as part of site plan. We're committed to a four-sided thing. It hasn't been fully vetted, from my perspective, that actually the elevations that they had, I didn't think looked that good and/or looked as four-sided as I would have wanted it or you would have wanted it. So I think that's something that can be handled in the site plan. I don't view that as a really major thing from your perspective.
And when we're talking about four-sided architecture, we're also talking about the property line that abuts, I guess it would be the bank side as well. That there be a commitment to work on that side, where there's a property side.
In terms of materials, we do have problems with glass or some other things.
Understood that you can't do glass there for a variety of reasons.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
All right. And again, I apologize for going a little out of turn. And to Ms. Howell, certainly your comments were well taken, and I know that we're going to have discussions further about the drive aisle issue, so my apologies for going a bit out of turn there. But why don't we continue with the public hearing? Mr. Tom? Yes, thank you. If I can get a motion to go beyond 10:30.
Move to, go beyond 10:30.
If I can get a second. We're locked in second by Mr. Pepe. Y'all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any exceptions? The ayes have it, we're going past 10:30. Okay, Mr. Tom Gittens, followed by Mr. Mike Novatny.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. My name is Tom, Tom Gittens. I live at 153 West Annandale Road, also owner of a business here in the city. Two points regarding the special exception proposal from Rushmark Properties. And isn't this exciting, the fact that we've got two amazing projects being built here in the city? I love it. It's going to bring a lot of energy. I do ditto Deborah's comments. There are two issues that I have. One, utilizing the alternative design for the parking garage, and two, establishing restricted turning maneuvers, both affecting Annandale Road. The first point, utilizing effective alternative design for the parking garage, a serious problem has been caused by Harris Teeter's unneighborly stance at the very end of this approval process. That's right, Harris Teeter, your neighborhood store. Harris Teeter is refusing to grant a modest request that would make a huge difference to the quality of life in our neighborhood, in our neighborhood. One that might have already, one that has already been acknowledged and is workable. It's been done in Clarendon with Trader Joe's, Pentagon City, and Old Town Alexandria with Whole Foods. Their refusal is unacceptable. Come on, I'll accept all the waivers and special exceptions, the height bonus to which I will no longer have a sunrise view during the springtime. I'm okay with that. The commercial entrance loading docks access within 100 feet, now it's going to be 25 feet. The service aisle within 100 feet slated for 15 feet. All the signs and all the allowance residential uses. Concessions, yes, the neighborhood has given a lot of concessions, and Harris Teeter has given none, none at all. I do not accept the drive aisle as it stands now. I ask that you do not approve the project this evening. Do not allow this special exception from Rushmark Properties. Rushmark has made improvement concession, important, excuse me, Rushmark has made quite a few important concessions, and I commend them for that. The neighbors certainly have, Harris Teeter has not. The second point, establishing a right-in, right-out restricted turning maneuver at Annandale Road. You have the power to maintain the quality of life for our neighborhood and establishing safety concerns immediately, right now, not waiting. Staff is contradicting itself, stating the resulting development does not overburden the existing community facilities, and then states the impact of the vicinity of this project will be dramatic. Mitigate the impact of incorporating the right-in, right-out restricting turning maneuver. This is feasible to implement and enforce. Gundery in Annandale, this minimizes the traffic here. Take the initiative, save the neighborhood, prevent an injury, prevent the death, instill the right-in, right-out restricted turning maneuver for all delivery service residential and retail vehicles. Please accept these two items, utilizing the alternative design for the parking garage and establishing restricted turning maneuvers, both affecting Annandale Road, both affecting our neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tom. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Novatny, followed by Karen Oliver.
My name is Michael Novatny. I chair the Economic Development Authority in Falls Church. On April 2nd, the applicant presented its project to the EDA, and on April 24th, we, is there feedback? On April 24th, we issued a letter which voiced unanimous support and a very strong recommendation to approve this project, as it currently states. You have already heard about the positive economic impact that this project will deliver. Besides that, the likelihood of encouraging additional future investment in our downtown is very significant with this project. The board, the Economic Development Board, commended the many substantial changes the applicant has made to date to try to address the concerns voiced by nearby residents. One was mentioned earlier, the garage enclosure, which is roughly a million dollars in value as presented by the applicant. Another not mentioned is actually pulling the building farther away from the rear property line despite not needing to, and going to concrete construction, which is another millions of dollars invested in the project to make that happen. We, as EDA, ultimately believe this is a very strong project, and it should be approved. Outside of the EDA's recommendation, I'll just take a couple of minutes to commend the applicant on a few additional points. The first, as you are aware, part of the property involved in this project is EDA-owned land, and we are absolutely delighted to see this land go towards such a strong economic use and a revitalization that is so badly needed in our downtown. The second point that I'll mention, the EDA suggested preserving an area along Broad Street for a future Capital Bike Share station. The applicant has agreed to do this and work with the city on this. I appreciate that. And I do encourage staff and the applicant to continue working towards perhaps funding that future Capital Bike Share station through their TDM program, which is in their voluntary concessions. The third issue, and this is, you know, something that hasn't gotten a lot of press, but has, you know, joined us late in the game. The EDA suggested trying to add some public parking spaces in this project in order to help alleviate the downtown parking issues that we experience today. These are real issues. We've heard from local businesses time and again. Predatory parking has been an issue that has come up over and over and over again. This is, I think, a phenomenal solution to try to help solve some of those parking issues that we currently have and our local retailers need in order to grow their business. The applicant has agreed to do this as well. They have agreed to include a minimum of 22 public parking spaces in the garage, provided it does not throw the project into significant delays. I'm ecstatic to see this solution come forward. It's a win-win for the city and the applicant. But I will tell you that there's this drive aisle discussion that's underway, and I've looked at this very closely, spent many hours personally on this. And I can tell you, in my opinion, if you move the drive aisle, it'll be very difficult, if possible at all, to make the public parking work. This will essentially prevent the public parking from happening in this project. So I strongly urge you not to insist on moving the drive aisle. I understand there are issues that continue on the one side of the project. I'd like to also think about the local business owners on the other side of the project. How do we also help them? And I think this could be a great solution for that. So on a personal note, I would just like to thank the applicant for working with the city in good faith. We've gone through a lot of different issues on this project. I think it's made great progress. I do think it is ready to be approved tonight, and I wish them the best, and I look forward to being able to walk to a local grocery store very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is Ms. Karen Oliver, followed by James Repport.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Karen Oliver. I reside at 157 West Annandale Road. I also serve on the Winter Hill Community Association Board. I came this evening initially to speak, to express my personal opinions, but it's come to my attention that many of you may not have received a copy of the letter which we sent to Harris Teeter last Friday. As a point of process, can you tell me, as the city council, have you seen this letter? Okay. There seems to have been a breakdown in communication. This came to you via email, via the city clerk. It did not go forward, and I was not aware of that until I got the confirmation that Harris Teeter's response to our letter had been received by the city clerk. So I'm going to give up probably most of my time to just make you aware of this letter. It was written on May 10th, and it was sent directly to Harris Teeter. The first paragraph is introductory. The second paragraph says, "We're writing on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Winter Hill Community Association. The neighborhood of 194 homes that immediately abuts your proposed store. We want to inform you of a significant concern we share about the latest proposal we have seen for the site. While members of our community have worked for months to cooperatively shape a site proposal that can meet the essential needs of Rushmark and Harris Teeter, our present concern, if unaddressed, will prevent our community from continuing in support of your proposal. In particular, we will be unable to support in the city's May 13 public hearing the waiving of zoning rules required to locate your loading dock within 100 feet of our residential district. As you know, our community was concerned about the location of your loading docks on the side of the property closest to our homes rather than the side of the property next to other commercial properties. We understand that your needs for this store may make moving the loading docks undesirable, and we recognize Rushmark's efforts to mitigate the dock's noise and pollution by enclosing the loading dock and a portion of the service aisle. However, our members' homes to the west of your site are still adversely affected by the proposed placement of the garage drive aisle along the same property line. The site traffic study indicated that 3,000-plus cars will use this aisle each weekday, increasing to 4,500-plus cars on the weekend. That is more than a tenfold increase in the traffic that passes by those homes currently and will significantly diminish the quality of life for those residents. The location of this drive aisle also requires a waiver. We understand that Rushmark has created an alternative design for the parking garage that would allow the drive aisle to be moved to the east side of the property, improving the quality of life for your immediate neighbors and the safety of all local pedestrians. As reported to the Falls Church City Council this week by Patrick Kearney, President of Rushmark Properties, Harris Teeter is unwilling to approve a change to one of the parking garage entrances and drive aisles unless the city and Virginia Department of Transportation approve a left turn into the store from Broad Street. We understand that the garage redesign necessary to make the request to change in the drive aisle will not be pursued. This is our concern. Our community has made important concessions to accommodate the Rushmark proposal, and we are asking you to make a concession too. Many of us support the request to create a left turn option into the store from Broad Street, as it will further decrease the impact to our neighborhood of this development. But we ask that you not make this a condition for changing the garage and drive aisle design." And then the final paragraph just said, "Many, if not the vast majority of our residents, look forward to having Harris Teeter within easy walking distance and are potentially ready to support the proposed development. We believe that you can be a good neighbor. Please give Rushmark authorization to present a proposal that includes the revised garage and drive aisle design. Absent this concession on the part of Harris Teeter, we cannot support the loading dock waiver at the public hearing before the city council on May 13." Harris Teeter's response to this was that, "While we understand the issues that you expressed, we think sometimes a public forum may be the best place to express concerns. It will allow the city of Falls Church, the developer, our landlord, and the neighbors to suggest, recommend, and go forward with the best plan for all concerned." Basically, they refused to respond to our request directly. They didn't confirm or deny that they were the roadblock on this item, and they basically said that it should come forward in the public process. If I can just sneak in like 15 seconds of personal comment, I would just like to say, as an individual, not as a board representative, that I believe that zoning restrictions exist for a reason. Maybe not the exact details, whether something is 100 feet or 99 feet is subject to interpretation. But the basic reason for the zoning restrictions are to protect not just the property values, but the health and safety of the community. And I think that we need to consider the health and safety of the community and make sure that we are doing everything that we can to mitigate the effect on the neighbors and the rest of the community if we're granting exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker slip that I have is from James Repport, followed by Lynn Bosk.
Elected Representatives, good evening. My name is Jim Rupert. I'm one of the dozens of residents of Winter Hill who've been working for several months now with city staff and with the developer, Rushmark, to try to enhance the positive attributes of this project and to reduce the negative ones, which for us are significant. We've had a strong dialogue. It's been civil, it's been courteous, it's been productive with Rushmark, and this has resulted in some changes, some improvements to the proposed design. As a neighbor, I don't like the design, but I've, you know, we as neighbors are not going for something that makes us happy here. We're going for, we're trying to work for something that we can. We're going for, we're trying to work for something that we can live with. And so we come to the issue of this drive aisle placed 15 feet away from the homes of some of our neighbors. This for a project that, from the start, by its nature, is very high density. We're packing the equivalent of the spectrum onto a smaller lot here, and so consequently, all the negatives that come with that are intensified. We're talking about running the traffic past these homes, a few, you know, a few feet away from these homes, from a count of 200 vehicles a day to 3,000, 4,500. I share Mr. Navatney's concern about the state of parking downtown, but I don't think we want to solve, I don't suspect that if Mr. Navatney lived in one of those houses 15 feet away, that he would likely be so enthusiastic about solving the, you know, sort of the citywide downtown parking problem on the backs of those particular property owners, and that's certainly something that I don't want to do. We've got a problem of process here. Harris Teeter has come to us. We've heard from Patrick tonight. They're very concerned. Let's go. Let's get moving. We want to start today on this project if we can. Well, you know, where are they? They've been unresponsive. They've been unresponsive to the Winter Hill letter. While we've had an intensive dialogue with Patrick and with Rushmark, Harris Teeter has been virtually absent from this, okay? They've sent a couple of representatives who had a brief meeting with us, have had brief meetings with city staff, but we've got a big company down in North Carolina. They're at a distance from us. They have a lot of other things on their minds. We need to put this proposal and this issue clearly on their minds. It's not hard to do, to get them to show clearly why they should not be required to build this part of their project, that is, the drive aisle, in a way sensitive to the community and their neighbors. The people who can do it are you. Granting the special exception and zoning waivers without a real response from Harris Teeter on this issue would not feel right. It won't pass the smell test, and it's something that should not be done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is from Liz Lynn Voss. She's out. Okay. Sorry. Okay, sounds good. We'll take that up when we get to written comments we've received. The next speaker slip that I have is from Ken Fears, followed by Becky Babaki.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name's Ken Fears. My wife, Lila, and I moved here about three years ago, actually, three years ago next week. We've grown to really appreciate this community and our immediate neighbors, who we are coming here together to address you on this drive aisle issue. From my right, we have Ed Gray, we have Aiman Aba Fargala, and Rebecca Bogoki. We are in the four homes that immediately abut the southwest corner of this project, the drive aisle issue. I can say for myself, we expected development in this area. You know, the post office has really run its course. We expected, it was an opportunity for us. We never expected it on this scale, and we certainly expected for more mediation between us and the project, a lot more amelioration, and we haven't had it. What's been proposed is a six-foot wall. We already have six-foot fences. They've suggested some scrub trees, scrub labanon cedars behind it. That's not going to mitigate the impact of 3,000 cars per day, 4,500 on the weekends. The vast majority of that volume coming in the evenings, when we're trying to enjoy our time with our families, we're trying to like, you know, unwind from work, just like all of you. Imagine, put yourself in that situation. On the weekends, we're trying to enjoy our backyards, and we can hear that traffic, and we can hear those 18-wheelers, and we can certainly see them over that six-foot wall and behind, you know, right through those trees. It's not going to ameliorate the impact. So we came together, we worked with a professional architect and designer to come up with this alternative. It was not my suggestion, it was a professional suggestion. It was vetted by Rushmark, it was vetted by their architects, it was vetted by Harris Teeter and their engineers, it was vetted by the city staff, and everybody gave it a green light as of April 15th. Now, actually, Patrick just suggested that Harris Teeter did not green light at that time. That's the first I've heard of it. It was presented in a public forum, so that actually, that really surprises me. As was mentioned earlier, as of the 22nd, a second document was produced. This was after the planning commission had negated that suggestion because of the VDOT concerns, which were anchored to this proposal by Rushmark. That was kind of a quid pro quo for accepting this change in terms of the drive aisle. That document actually spelled out, as was already discussed, that this change was not only better, but it was safer for all modes of transportation. If you look at what happens with the pedestrian currently, they have to pass across two curb cuts, two busy-turning areas with heavy volumes of vehicles. Then they would have to walk along the drive aisle, then into the underground parking lot, and cross three more rows of traffic. I mean, it's like a game of Frogger from when we were kids. The alternative is about two lanes of traffic. It's significantly safer. So what we're asking for is for you to revisit this subject, especially in light of the document that was provided after the planning commission had an opportunity to review it. Also, it was suggested earlier that this was not, was considered in conjunction with left-hand turn. That's actually not the case. If you read the document, they actually separated the two. They looked at them in separation, and they actually stated that this program seems reasonable due to the consolidation of entrances on Annandale, provided the West Broad entrance is designed as a right-in, right-out only, as recommended above. The applicant has suggested that without the left movement from Broad, it may not be possible to consolidate the retail and residential access points on Annandale. The applicant must demonstrate why this is not feasible. That hasn't been done. So that's what we're asking to be done. We're asking for you to do the same thing city staff did, consider them separately, recognize that this is safer for all. It's certainly better for us, but it's better for the overall community, this design. So again, four weeks ago, we had the grand agreement. Everybody was happy. What we're asking is just revise the grand agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker slip that I have is Rebecca Babaki.
Becky Babaki, yes. Good evening to Mayor and the City Council. I would just like to say that I think many of my cohorts from the association have eloquently spoken our opinions of what should happen. The other thing that I would like to make you aware of is that I am a member of the Winter Hill Community Association Board, as Karen is, and that the letter that was sent, she represented us in what she sent to Harris Teeter. I took another look at that letter, and I was, whoa, one other thing before that. I'm a 25-year-plus resident of Falls Church City. I've been here a long time. I like the city. I like that we want to make some changes. I just want to make sure that the changes made within the city are to enhance it for the use of its citizens. I would like to reiterate everything that Ken Fears has stated and add more information. The Homeowners Association Board wrote a letter, which Karen read to you in good faith to Harris Teeter representatives this past week, expressing a specific concern about the garage drive aisle placement. In the short response received from Harris Teeter representatives, I quote, "We try to do the right thing for neighbors. We will go forward with the best plan for all concerned. We will continue to make every effort to make the project come together." If these statements are true, then we can trust Harris Teeter to follow through with the alternative design that was called doable and agreeable four weeks ago by Rushmark, Harris Teeter, Falls Church City, and the neighbors, and not to make this design contingent upon VDOT's approval of a left-hand turn from Broad Street. If these statements are not true, the right thing for neighbors is not a consideration. The definition for all was not clearly defined, and every effort to make the project come together is thwarted. We are simply asking for a single concession from Harris Teeter for the developer to present the proposal that includes the revised garage drive aisle design that would help us to resolve the problems of privacy, safety, noise abatement, and pollution for our homes and for our neighborhood. This process has been quick, maybe too quick, to adhere to statements previously made and ideas found doable and agreeable by all those concerned. One question remains: Are we sacrificing additional options and quality for expediency? I thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Chuck Anderson.
City Council, I'm Chuck Anderson of 137 West Annandale Road. First, I am still reeling from Mr. Navatney's commentary. Mr. Navatney, we've been working on this for seven months. You showed up on May 6th with this idea. I'm stunned by the insensitivity of your presentation. It's unfortunate that you hadn't engaged with this dialogue much earlier. It's been a wonderful dialogue. It's been a long haul. And for a little perspective, we are, from my view, very close to a deal that the city can take a lot of pride in. This has been a rich, three-way dialogue, for the most part, between three parties. A neighborhood that has welcomed a grocery store and acknowledged the need for redevelopment from the very beginning. A developer that has been genuinely willing to work with the neighbors and address their concerns, and has made some genuine concessions. And a city government that has really taken the time to deeply understand all the factors and weigh them all. Let's not let Harris Teeter deny all of us the success here at the 11th hour. We are simply asking you to have our backs on this. We would like you to press Harris Teeter on this, to make what may well be for them a temporary concession, to allow the drive aisle redesign to go forward before VDOT's approval. This is not, in our view, asking much on behalf of those who have given quite a bit Finally, I would just like to add to the facts presented tonight. This afternoon, I was able to round up without any difficulty at all four local examples of the kind of drive aisle that we're asking for that are already in operation at other Harris Teeters, Whole Foods, and Trader Joe's in this region. I have them summarized in very brief format. I would like to give them to the city clerk for your perusal. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Those are all the speaker slips that I have. Are there any members of the public that wish to address council further on this? And I believe that we received some written comments as well. You can summarize those.
Council, what I just passed out to you was the list of locations that Mr. Anderson was referring to. Trader Joe's in Clarendon, Harris Teeter in Old Town, Whole Foods, Pentagon City, Whole Foods in Old Town, and you have the details there in front of you. Gordon Thies supports the mixed-use project at 5:40, and he supports it at 3:01 West Broad. And you did, I did receive the petition here from Mr. Baskin, which would be part of the public record. And Lynn Voss, who had to leave, she gave me her statement. She talks about the drive aisle and how it's tied to the VDOT approval. She suggested maybe somebody with senior contacts at VDOT trying to fast-track the request. She is concerned that Harris Teeter is asking for delivery hours to begin at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday instead of 9:00 a.m., as required by code. I don't know if that was resolved or not. She said that all of the neighbors work long hours, are very busy people, just like everyone else. They look forward to some extra sleep on Saturday mornings. She noted that the master bedrooms are on the side of the house, right along the drive-thru area, where the trucks and 18-wheelers would be coming and going. She said that they, overall, they like the project, and they've been willing to work with everyone at Rushmark, and they now hope that Harris Teeter will work with the neighborhood so they can enjoy having the store right near their master bedrooms and backyards. And that's everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to close the public hearing on this and open it up for any council member questions, and then we'll take up motions and discussions. So any questions at this point, council members? And so far, the one change that I believe that we'll have, so we'll need an amendment to whatever is done, is on the voluntary concessions that we're deleting. This was on paragraph 11. It would read, "Developer agrees to restrict the times of deliveries and trucks," or I'm sorry, "The developer agrees to restrict the times of deliveries and trash trucks serving the commercial space between the hours of," and then it just carries on from there. This is on the voluntary concessions. And this would also make it consistent to what the code actually has on our noise ordinance. And if there's issues, we'll revisit it. But that's what it would read tonight if this does go forward at this point, so we'll definitely need something amended by whoever makes any motions. So any discussions, council members, before we take up motions?
[inaudible]
Please, yeah.
Yeah, okay. The developer, yes.
Can I ask the developer just to respond to all the, we've just heard?
Well, there was a couple of different things, again, from our perspective, which we were trying to weigh in doing this. We didn't not listen to the neighborhood. We did take their plan and fully developed it. It kind of got, there was a little bit of a timeline issue here. We were trying to figure out whether Harris Teeter would approve it or not. Harris Teeter, we have to be a little bit sensitive, did not say absolutely they wouldn't do this plan. They said, "We prefer this other plan. That's what our business deal has been, and we'd only consider doing this other plan if you're going to get the left turn lane off of Broad." So we went to staff to talk about the left turn off of Broad. We realized the timeline wasn't going to work. Around the same time, we went to the planning commission and said, "You shouldn't be doing that at all. We like the drive aisle where it is." So we kind of went with what was, what we thought was approvable and expedient, and made the issue easier for the parties involved, with the exception of the neighborhood, which we knew they were not going to be happy about it. So, and so it's kind of a little bit of a tricky situation. We are not necessarily opposed to it. It does bring up issues with trying to get public parking in the garage, which is another issue in this thing. It does bring in some other things that Harris Teeter will have to approve that they haven't yet. They haven't turned down anything, but they haven't approved it either. There's a distinction there. I don't want everyone to think that Harris Teeter is the bad guy in this. They're really not. It's just that they had already approved a layout that we had proposed, and went back later and presented one to them, that they wanted to tie the left turn lane, which took too long, and then the planning commission said, "Don't do that," until we came back to where we were. So that's, I don't know if that clarifies for you from our perspective, but...
More, if you guys don't mind? So if you had the left turn lane, you'd be okay moving the drive aisle, or Harris Teeter would be?
I believe so. I don't have that approval. It probably would preclude getting the extra city parking the way that the thing is going to work out, or you might not get as much city parking. Again, this all kind of flared up in the last week, so a lot of this has not been fully vetted as to how it would play out, but that is another issue and part of that.
Let me ask maybe the city manager or staff, how long would it take to get VDOT approval, approximately?
Well, their standard answer is six to nine months. So that's the best information I can provide.
That's their standard answer? Do we have any experience with that?
We had one on the North Gate project. We had one on the North Gate project. There's a left-hand turn through that median cut, and that did take multiple months. I don't recall exactly how many months, but it was not two. It was closer to six.
If I can just make a, make a suggestion before we go down numerous rabbit holes here, I think there's two issues that we're hearing. One is, we're hearing sort of, sort of late in the game, rather, that there's some tie-in between the left-hand turn, which I think there's support for generally amongst council and the community, somehow being tied to the drive aisles, but I don't think anybody really fully understands what the tie-in may be. So, you know, perhaps Harris Teeter could explain this at some point. I think it's going to come up during site plan anyhow regarding the waivers. But I wouldn't necessarily just say, just because Harris Teeter's suggesting it, it's sort of definitely tied. I think staff has asked for an explanation of why there's a tie, and that thread hasn't been closed. Two, on the public parking, there may be support on the council on this. I think that's still being looked at. Certainly, the city hasn't committed to those parking spaces, and the developer hasn't committed to those parking spaces. So I think that's just an outstanding item. If it comes to bear that the city wants it, and the developer is amenable to it at the end of the day, perhaps the drive aisles won't work out, but I would hate for us to say, since the drive, you know, since the public parking is in the air, that somehow we shouldn't explore the drive aisle situation any further. So that would, that would be my suggestion, is that let's not couple all these things together when there's still a lot of work to be done on this at this point.
Was tried to come up with a solution that could be voted on tonight. And so, I mean, I think that's a path, that is a path.
Yeah. No, I mean, if you've got a suggestion for a path, I think that we should, we should hear it.
I'm sort of leading towards that in the sense that if, and I don't know if this is possible, maybe the city attorney could speak to it, if there's a, first, I wanted to find out if the developer or Harris Teeter, if they knew that Harris Teeter was okay making this change subject to the left turn lane being approved. And if so, it may be possible to craft some kind of language or condition or whatever to basically say, "This is the first, you know, this is our first priority to make this left turn lane, to move the drive aisle. If VDOT doesn't grant that approval, then maybe it goes back to where it is." In other words, we're trying to get there, but if we can't get there, then we go back to the Plan B, but maybe shift Plan B to Plan A if that works for people and mechanically we can do that. That's a thought that's occurring to me. Whether there's support for that, I don't know, but that was the idea in the line of questioning.
You know, my concern with that is you start voting in additional conditions, it does complicate things. I know that, I believe Councilman Snyder had drafted up a proposed amendment that hopefully is in your packet that addresses both the left turn issue as well as the, the other issues regarding the drive aisle. And I think that, you know, he will, I don't want to speak for him, but my understanding is he's going to bring that forward. And if the council is supportive of that, that I think would get to where you want to be, Mr. Carter.
If I can explore that point just for a moment. Mr. Ross, I'm trying to understand the point that you're making. Are you suggesting that the motion that council member Snyder may make encompasses what David Tarter's trying to get at, in the sense that if Harris Teeter comes back and says, "For the following reasons, we can only do the change in the drive aisle if there's a left-hand turn," that that would be permissible under the language that Vice Mayor Snyder may offer? That could be a reason why they can't do it, therefore go to the separate drive aisles?
I don't understand your question.
Well, I can, I can come back to that. Spare?
I think we're all trying to grab this here. And I, and what I'm trying to figure out is, Mr. Snyder has suggested alternate language, but what I'm trying to get to, which suggests that there will be a finite period of time in which the developer will come back to us with this drive aisle sorted out. What I'm trying to, what I would like to know is, is this a reasonable request? In other words, are we simply delaying a decision for the period of time that Mr. Snyder has suggested, and in fact, this is a no-go with Harris Teeter? I just want to know if this is even anything we can...
No, I can't say it's a no-go with Harris Teeter at this point. I would think it might be reasonable to have a 30-day window to try and pursue it further, but I can also promise that after 30 days, it will be a go.
Exactly, okay.
Mr. Campbell?
Actually, the way I read this, the first sentence, okay, but prior to the final decision at the end of two weeks, the developer shall provide written statements to the city council as to the reasons why the drive, or what if they say they don't want to do it? We're going to sit here and then we're going to ask for more information? Is this really to get two weeks, or is this really to kill the project? Because this is, this is a never-ending process now, where they have to provide answers to our satisfaction. And if we're not satisfied, what happens then?
Other council members? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks very much. I'm struck by a couple of things. The neighborhood, I think, felt that a resolution had been agreed to, and then it seemed to come undone, and then it was linked to, or at the same time, it was linked to the left-hand turn lane, which raises some serious timing issues. We also have a memo from city staff that talks about that, in fact, the proposal that the neighborhood is talking about may be safer. The real party that can sort of decide some of this isn't even here before us tonight. So there are a couple of options, it seems to me. The first thing we should do is just formally endorse the left-hand turn, regardless of whether it's linked to something else or not. I think that's, everyone wants that because it'll get some traffic off Anandale. So I think we can take that action. That's the easy part. The tough part, then, is how do we deal with the drive aisle? The one approach would be to table this for a week and try to get it clarified during the course of the week. Some neighbors have suggested that. I'll propose that to council. My own view is, I don't think there are votes here to support that, but we can put it up and see. Another approach is to go forward, but to, to, in order, and not slow down the overall project, but at the same time, require that this be looked at and thoroughly reviewed before we go to site plan for the planning commission. That may work and would address, I think, the issue. So that would be another proposal, which I think is similar to what, to where council member Tarter was going. So let me put that out for people to consider.
Other council members? Mr. Duncan and then Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, thank you, Bill, for those suggestions on both counts. I think, I'm thinking out loud a little bit like Johanna. Here's my concern with the garage. You know, we don't have the most stellar record of success when we have built our mixed-use buildings here in the city of designing garages that work very well. I think we all know that. We get by, but they're not optimal. So we want to get this right. I received the information that Chuck sent about how it's done at some of these other stores, but here's my experience in daily visiting a large institutional garage here in Northern Virginia, which has only one entrance and exit. And that is that during several times of the day, particularly midday and end of day, there's considerable backup, getting into said garage and getting out of said garage. And so my initial reaction to a garage that only has one way in and out is skeptical. Separating the residential and commercial traffic, to me, has appeal because it just encourages the traffic to flow rather than sit at idle and, you know, pollute the neighborhood and pollute the inside of the garage. The second thing is, in talking with Chuck and Mr. Fears, the design does include a dead end in the garage. And for me, that's just a no-can-go. And the worst thing you can do is to have a car going down into a garage, looking for a space, get to the end, find one, find none, and then have to back out. And so all these things lead me to want to try to have a garage that has at least the option of two entrances. I guess my question is, is it possible, as Mr. Snyder suggested, that we approve this tonight with the design providing for two, and yet at site plan internally, we can still discuss whether one might work? And that second entrance might become the emergency exit or the, you know, vestigial entrance? I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be used, but I am concerned about approving a garage with 550-plus spaces that only has one in and out. And for that reason, if I, if I had to, if you, you know, twisted my arm, I would rather vote for a garage that has two ways in and out. And the third, too, I agree with Mr. Snyder also, that the left turn off Broad Street, we all agree on that. So, I don't know, that's sort of, I mean, I know I'm thinking out loud, but that's where my head is at. If Tom Gittens has suggested some turning restrictions, which are interesting, you know, perhaps if we had the second entrance later on at site plan, we could talk about, you know, turning restrictions at one of the entrances, if not both of them. It just seems like there's some options that we could pursue with the two entrance garage that I would like to see discussed, whether at site plan by the planning commission, which would have the benefit of some of this discussion and information that we picked up here. Thank you.
Other council members? Campbell?
Dave, could you help clarify what your idea was? I mean, if I understood it, was we would approve or remove the project, but it would have in it that at site plan or at the next step, there would be more decisions made as to how the drive aisle would be handled?
Right. It would be limited to the drive aisle issue, and it would say that the developer commits to continuing to work with the neighborhood stakeholders on the issue, and then to provide a written conclusion to that in advance of the site plan work. So that means you don't slow down the project, because I know that's important, but you get this issue, continue to work on during that period of time.
And your amendment would, would just say that shall provide a written conclusion? Because the last part is what is concerning to me, because that's a never-ending...
Not clear what final decision it was.
So if it ends in two weeks, or excuse me, it ends after they give their piece, and we don't go back and say, you know, "But this isn't good enough," or something. We get their decision, and in the process, we approve the project, and we then give it a little bit more time for them to review the other aspect?
Yeah, that's what I intend.
Okay.
If I can provide my sort of two cents on this, and I'll let council members continue the discussion, you know, to me, this is sort of low, you know, very low-hanging fruit because, as I understand it, this, what we're debating right now, because this is an issue that's going to come up at site plan, because this applicant is going to be seeking a waiver of the 100 feet, and they have to show that really it's the only reasonable way of doing it. And the bar's pretty high, granted that it's been granted in other projects, but they're still going to have to do what we're asking them to do. So the way that I'm actually interpreting this is, we're encouraging, if you will, Harris Teeter and the applicant to even more seriously than they would otherwise be required to at site plan, because we're giving it the stamp of the council saying, "We really want you to focus in on this issue and answer the questions about the drive aisles." That's really how I'm seeing it. So all it's doing is just adding the little oomph of the city council before it goes to planning commission. Because this issue is, if we take no action, the issue is going to come up before, before the planning commission. Am I, am I wrong on that, or am I right on that?
But one thing that I do want to make clear is that what council member Snyder said is that there's a two-week, as drafted, there's a two-week window on that. And I believe that the way that this should be interpreted is that the decision then is the developer's, after having worked it through, and then the developer with Harris Teeter then informs the city about what, what its conclusion is. So there's not another council action. There is another planning commission action, and so they will have that in hand, but there's a lot of work that goes into site plan. The site plan is a very detailed set of specifications. And so leaving this issue, which is a fundamental design issue, to site plan isn't feasible. This decision needs to be decided, I think the developer would prefer it to be decided tonight, but if it's not decided tonight, it needs to be decided soon and not put off and just land in the planning commission's lap.
Would we be doing the planning commission a favor, I guess, or otherwise it would land on their lap? Spare?
Well, I thought the whole idea of even suggesting a week or two weeks or whatever it was, was out of courtesy and for Harris Teeter, for whom, who has not been deeply engaged in this conversation. I mean, if it were just up to the folks here, it'd be one thing, but I thought the whole idea was, given some date, whatever it is, that Harris Teeter is duly consulted and has an opportunity to respond, not only because the neighbors have asked for this, but because it has risen to the point that council is now saying, "We would like to see a response," you know, not to be debated by council, but a response that reflects, you know, a thoughtful review and consideration.
Other council members?
I mean, I guess I have some concern that their response will be dependent on VDOT turn lane that won't be decided for six to nine months. And so I don't know exactly where that leaves us. In other words, we'll, and maybe you could, if I'm, what I'm speaking is inaccurate, but it sounded, based on what I heard earlier, was, "We're okay moving the drive aisle, probably, but we need that left turn lane. If we're not going to have clarity on the left turn lane for six to nine months, I think this issue will be floating for that period of time." And so, I mean, if I've said something inaccurate, let me know. But to me, I want to get to the finish line with this project. I think this is a great project for the city. I understand the neighbor's concern, which is why I'm trying to work something out that hopefully meets everybody's needs. But I think overall, this is something tremendously important to revitalize our downtown area, and it has to work for Harris Teeter as well. If it doesn't, we're not getting Harris Teeter.
I think there's a possibility it can, it can work, and I also think that the left turn off of Broad comment from them was because they weren't sure there was even city support for that at that point. So if it's more of just a VDOT issue, then it's probably not as big an issue.
Well, thank you, Patrick. I think that's very helpful. I think, I think we can, I think we can, I think if I can speak for the council on this, I think you're likely to get support in some formal action. I think Vice Mayor Snyder is prepared to offer something along those lines, indicating the support for VDOT. And that's why I was suggesting perhaps these, these things are not necessarily have to be linked. The city can be a little bit more forward-leaning on the VDOT issue.
Yes.
Because we all agree that's in everybody's interest. So if we can focus on the...
And that changed to the process. That's a lot stronger than it was earlier, so that helps, yes.
So I, it sounds like that's going to be helpful for everybody.
Yes.
So, and that's why I was suggesting, my suspicion is that they're sort of separate issues when it comes to the end of the day, if there is a commitment that we are going to follow up with VDOT, which I'm thinking that we may have consensus on that. So it goes back to the, the language. One question that I have for the developer, I know that Vice Mayor Snyder's motion that he hasn't made yet, but I think he's going to make, it has two weeks in there, does that...
I think two weeks is too short, and I'm willing to stretch that out a little bit longer to get Harris Teeter to do it.
How much time do you think you need?
I think 30 days is probably reasonable. I guess the only thing I'm a little bit concerned about, and I don't want to beat a dead horse here, is that this is going to be a conditional approval, that if it doesn't work out, then we're going back to the old plan? Is that what this is going to say?
I think the notion was it's similar to the parking.
To take it to the worst case, then, it could go to planning commission, and we could never agree on where this drive aisle is going to be, in which case we don't have a zoning approval?
No, no, no.
Just the approval tonight, just, and let me make council correct me if I'm wrong on this. The, the project would be approved per the conceptual development plan with this amendment that says you'll continue to work the issue for 30 days now, if that's the, if that's the number. But the decision does not come back to council for the council to revisit it. The commitment is to continue to work the issue and then have it be resolved on the basis... basis of the standard that's laid out here, which is feasible or not feasible for reasons of public safety or adequate vehicular circulation. And that's the standard that's laid forward in the waiver for the drive aisle waiver of 100 feet. So that's where that language comes from.
Right. Which is what you're.
From my perspective, we've always tried to work with the neighborhood through this. This wasn't something we gave short shrift to the neighborhood on. It was a path we chose because of the circumstances that presented themselves. So I'm okay with working the neighborhood and pushing to get this done. I'm just a little bit worried about the ongoing risks that we don't have an approved project, because there's other things that are triggered and other things that we need to get going on. That's it. But I'm not saying you haven't solved that. I'm just.
Why don't I propose this? I think we've got the city lawyer, and I believe that we've got the applicant's lawyer and the applicant. If we can take a, why don't we say a five, 10-minute break? Five minutes? Try to have them hash out something that's acceptable and then bring it back. Is that?
If you really want to clarify this, to say that you take out where the prior to a final decision, the developer will continue to work and so on. At the end of the two-week period, the developer will provide a legitimate basis to the city council. That is absolutely clear. But right, you don't want somebody popping up there when council has something that says there's another decision.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need to take a five-minute break. I'm not trying to complicate things. If it's 30 days and you just come up with some language, I'm acceptable. I want to work on this, so.
No, no. I just, I hate doing this language change from the dais, so why don't we just take five minutes, just make sure that everybody understands the language and is comfortable with it? I don't want to pressure you, Patrick, to doing this from the dais. So if you all take five minutes without the council having 20 million things to say. So why don't we, why don't we take a break for five minutes and come right back? All right. Why don't we come back together? And I believe that the applicant and the city attorney had an opportunity to work out some language dealing with that. So before we take the motion, Vice Mayor Snyder, do you want to just read that and then we can take formal motions, just so everybody's on the same page?
Yeah. Maybe the best approach would be for Ira, whoever wants to move the TR 1310, and then that'll be on the floor, and then I'll propose and read the amendment.
That's fine. I just want to make sure, I don't know if all council members have seen the potential amendments, so I want to give them 30 seconds to look at it.
We'll all form community. You get a motion before then.
That's fine.
Then we can make the amendment, then we can discuss.
That's fine. And then, just again, so it's clarified as well, the voluntary concessions also, there is a language change, as I mentioned on paragraph 11. It would be the developer agrees to the restriction of times of deliveries and trash trucks serving the commercial space to between, and then it would go on from there. So. Well, it would just be as amended, so, yeah. Mr. Foster, does that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever you said, yeah.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
It works.
If I can get a motion.
Move approval of TR 13-10, resolution granting a special exception for residential development and a height bonus to a maximum 90 feet in building height for mixed-use development project at 255 and 301 West Broad Street, known as 301 West Broad Street by Rushmark Properties LLC, as amended.
Thank you. If I can get a motion or?
Second? Need a second?
Yeah. I move that TR 1310 dated May 13, 2012 be amended to add an additional whereas at line 1291 as follows, quote, "Whereas the city supports the developer's application to the Virginia Department of Transportation for a left turn into the project parking garage from Broad Street. Furthermore, I move that TR 1310 dated May 13, 2013 be amended to add an additional condition number five as follows, quote, 'Five, the developer shall continue to work with stakeholders for a period of 30 days after adoption of this resolution on options to mitigate traffic impacts by moving a grocery store customer drive aisle to Annandale Road from the location shown in the conceptual development plan to an alternative location within the parking garage. At the end of this 30-day period, the developer shall provide a written statement to the city council as to reasons why the drive aisle location within the garage is feasible or not feasible for reasons of public safety or adequate vehicular circulation,' period end quote."
Okay. All right. And just again, so there's three changes that we're making. One was to the B.C. regarding the times, just for clarity on what types of trucks we're talking about, and that's all deliveries and trash. And then the other was the council's support for the left-hand turn onto Broad in the whereas clause. And there was an additional condition laid out, which I'm not going to try to summarize the deals with the drive aisles for shorthand. So if I can get an acceptance or a rejection by the person who made the motion, which I believe was Mr. Kalin.
I would like just a clarification, because it's 20 to 12, and this is where mistakes are made. This is not coming back for another decision of the city council.
That's correct.
Correct.
It is for the information of the city council.
Right.
You want to put that in the language for information of the city.
It's probably the capitalization.
I think that's.
Okay. As long as we're clear on that, then, okay.
And it would go before city staff and planning commission to sort out during the site plan process.
Then, no problem with the change.
And how about the person who seconded the motion? I believe that was Ms. Berry.
Yeah.
Is that acceptable?
Second.
All right. Anything further by council members? I know that there was, a member of council may want to make a statement to, before we take a vote, so I'll open that up if a council member wishes to make that.
I think kind of, I think.
Everybody's good? All right. Any comments before we move forward? Okay. Let's have a vote, please.
We're just checking one thing on rules and procedures really quickly. So we have the amendment, it was seconded, now we have a friendly amendment, and we just want to confirm that by the fact of it being a friendly amendment, that now we're ready to vote on it. And we just want to get that quick confirmation. Because Mr. Snyder's amendment was not seconded and has not been voted on, but as a friendly amendment, that may not be.
I thought it was. I thought that that's what we tried to do, but we can clarify that.
I thought he approved it.
I accepted it as a friendly.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So then I just want to be clear that, are we voting on the resolution as amended, or are we voting on the amendment? I just want to make sure we're clear as to what we're doing.
John, are we okay, even though we had a second?
I'm looking at my wordbook right now. I'm going to.
We can also second, I think, Vice Mayor Snyder's amendment, so why don't we do that, just so it's absolutely clear?
You vote on Mr. Snyder's amendment, please. And once that passes, we're going to vote.
Great. So right now, the only thing that's on the table is the amendment that was made regarding the loading. Okay. So why don't we go ahead and vote on, I'm sorry, we need a second to Vice Mayor Snyder's amendment, if I can get a second. So that's Mr. Pepe on the second on the Vice Mayor Snyder's amendments. So why don't we vote?
Before we vote, can we just make sure, is the applicant all right with the change? Okay.
All right. If we can take a vote on Vice Mayor Snyder's amendments.
These are Mr. Snyder's amendments, seconded by Mr. Pepe. Ms. Berry? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yeah.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Brute?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. So now we're, again, for those keeping score, given the late hour, the changes that have been made, again, are the voluntary concessions dealing with loading, the support for the VDOT issue dealing with the left-hand turn in the whereas clause, and then finally adding a condition dealing with the drive aisles.
This is a motion to approve TR 13-10 as amended with Mr. Snyder's amendments, moved by Mr. Kalin, seconded by Ms. Berry. Ms. Berry? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Brute?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. We are on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Mr. Shields, if you want to give a quick overview of those?
Yes. There are two items on the consent calendar. The first is authorization for the city manager to amend the contract with Breeding Construction Incorporated to expand up to $300,000 annually. This is a contract for roofing services and includes among the projects, a installation of a snow rail system to protect people around the entire building from falling snow. The second item on consent is authorization for the city manager to execute a contract with MacMillan Pazden Smith Architecture LLC for review and update of a 2008 space study and development of a long-range plan, long-range library master plan for the Mary Riley Stiles Public Library in the amount of $100,000 with reimbursable expenses not to exceed $10,000. And the council received a briefing on this report, on this plan at its last work session. And there are no appointments, I believe, on the consent calendar.
Questions on consent, or anybody wish to take them off? Ms. Berry?
I'm sorry, Mr. Shields, I was not at the work session. I apologize. This is the same $100,000 library plan that we've been talking about, or, yeah, nothing new.
Okay. Other council members? Mr. Duncan?
Just for the benefit of Ms. Berry, we had a animated discussion about the library consulting report at the last work session, which I will spare everyone repeating and look forward to the results, or the process that the consultant will go through to take public input, where any of us who are interested may attend and listen or voice our opinion. So, thank you.
Anything else on this, counsel? All right. If I can get a motion on the consent, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
Thank you. If I can get a.
I move the.
Thank you. If I can get a second, please. That's Councilmember Pepe. If I can get the roll call.
Ms. Berry? Yes. Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Brute?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. All right. We are on to business not on the agenda, or council member comments.
Nobody says it. Everybody.
Nobody says it.
Let me just say this really quick. Bike to work, bike to work, Dan Friday, you going, you doing it to Anna?
Sure.
All right, I'm doing it too. Ira, I want you to ride around your neighborhood.
All right, we're on to approval of meeting.
A lot of people wish you'd bike, actually.
All right, let's, any edits on the minutes of March twenty seventh?
Oh, Mr. Duncan, I hear you.
Okay, anything on the April eighth?
Yeah, okay, so on April eighth, thank you for rendering what I said so faithfully, but if you are on line two sixty.
Veronica did these.
Oh, that's right, okay, well, thank you corporately, then, jointly.
Yes.
She, you trained her. Two sixty, minimum, maximum goal of, I think of does not belong there. And in line two seven five, the split should add to a hundred, so it should be forty-six, fifty-four.
I'm sorry. At line two sixty, what did you want to put in front of goal?
Uh, just delete of.
So.
And on line two seventy-five?
Two seventy-five.
End of the line, split forty-six, fifty-four.
Forty-six, fifty-four.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other edits? Kathy, I had one edit on the April eighth. I'm not sure exactly what I said, but at line three sixty-eight, when I'm talking about fund balance, but it should be fund balance should only be used. It reads could, I mean, it could be used however, which way. My view was it should only be used certainly.
I can fix that, no problem.
Anything else, council? If I can have a motion for the meeting minutes as amended?
Is this for both sets, or just one?
This is for both sets.
For both sets.
I move approval of meetings of March twenty-seventh and April eighth as amended.
If I can get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, those meeting, the, the meeting minutes are adopted as amended. And if I can get a motion to adjourn, and we're done after that. If I can get a motion to adjourn, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
If I can get a second? Let's, Mr. Kaelin on the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you.